Good afternoon, good afternoon, City of Lamarck, City Council's special agenda of August the twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. I notice this here by giving that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a special meeting on August the twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, beginning at twelve P M. Excuse me, in council chambers eleven oh nine, at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer and the quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public. The meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Ms. Casey, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, council member District A.
Present.
Council member District B.
Present.
Council member District C.
Present.
Council member District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Casey. Before we get into our citizens' participation, it is custom for our council to have a moment of prayer as well as our pledge of allegiance. And so without objection from council, we will interject those two, those two items before we get to our citizens' participation. And I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Joe Compeon to lead us in our prayer and our I T supervisor Kyle, among many things, but right now he's our I T supervisor. Kyle Hunter to lead us in our pledge. Stand if you're able, please.
Glorious and blessed God, we place our work and ourselves into your hands today. Holy, when we come to you today, asking for your guidance, your wisdom and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful and respectful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and and to nurture and strengthen the bonds of community. It is always in your holy name we ask and pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Mr. Hunter. Move to item three on our agenda, citizens' participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council limited to three minutes. Wishing to speak, you may give the mayor, the presiding officer, your full legal name, your address, and item you wish to speak about. According to the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute. If you're participating via telephone, if you're participating via telephone. If you are participating on the Zoom platform via smartphone, tablet, or computer, there should be a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen that you might access to use. We're good? Over? We're good? Okay. There is a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen that you may access to mute and unmute yourself. If you are here visiting with us in person, there is a podium in the center aisle. You may approach when your name is called, give your name, address, and the item you wish to speak about, and you will be heard. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak?
I don't see any.
Very good. Let us remind ourselves, not saying this for our speaker, who I know to be a very very kind person, but just for all of our benefits, as we address council, we address council as a whole, we address council as members. And we will allow you to be heard. We will not have any personal attacks today. Certainly, we will not have any personal attacks in our citizens' request for hearing. Having said that, no person's online wishing to speak. We have one today. And again, this is not a reflection of this young man. This is certainly a reminder. But one speaker today is a one Mister Clint Yancey. Welcome, Mr. Yancey. Name and address for the record, please.
Clint Yancey, twenty six oh two Meadow Lane. Mayor, council, good afternoon, good morning, good afternoon. I'm here today at this, at the meeting. I wasn't gonna say anything, but the events of last night prompted me to come today and speak to the council. I'm, I'm, I'm kinda confused because I'm, because I have, we have a council member, you have a council member on your council that is our representative, that is not representing us. But instead is hurling attacks and insults and everything to offend. And so I just want, I'm confused as to why the council, why the council won't do anything to this, to my council. I know it's a budget meeting and seem like that's what should be the focus of, of, of my councilman, but instead it's not his focus. Focus is on hurling attacks to our family. And what I'd like to say is my employment, or anybody, my family's employment is not, is not anybody's business. It's how we obtain our, our belongings. And so to insinuate, and so for my councilman to insinuate what he did on last night, it's not acceptable. And I want this council to, 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 to say something, to do something, because this is out of, I, I know there's a code of ethics. I know that, that everybody that signed it and everything agreed to it. And I want this council to, to be accountable, to all of you be accountable. But particularly to my councilman that is not representing me and my family. My street looks horrible. I can barely drive down my street without, without my car rattling and sounding like it's about to come, come apart. That's what, that's what should be the focus, not what's going on in and against your household. And so, and so I heard him say a couple of weeks ago that if, if this council thinks that, that, that it's gonna keep them quiet or whatever, that that's not gonna happen. Well, I'm here to say that that's not gonna happen with the Yanceys either.
Sorry, Mr. Yancey.
So.
I, I, I heard that. Keep going, but we're gonna get, we're gonna pass.
I understand. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But, but I just wanted to say that, 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 that what goes on in our house is, is our business. How we purchase our things is our business. Nobody's taking any money. Nobody's, if, if we were taking money, trust me, we'd be living high on the hall. Trust me. But we're not. My employment, anybody in my house's employment, and how we get our money is, is our business. It's our business. It's not to be brought to, it's not to be brought out in a council meeting, not to be brought to funding the citizens. I mean, we, we, we have nothing to hide, of course. But we just have to make sure that, that, you know, that we don't up and up. So I'll say this in closing, you know, and I see the, I see a Bible right there. Well, I'm a man of the cloth. And so.
Finish your statement.
If you're gonna pack a Bible, read the Bible.
Thank you, Mr. Yancey. All right, council, thank you for item three. We move now to item four.
There's somebody now that would like.
Somebody now that would like to speak. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you now. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, this is Richard Loftus, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you now. Welcome.
Okay, um, this is Richard Loftus, three oh nine Johnson Street, and I just wanna, you know, implore the, the council as a whole to stop the circus. Last night's meeting was just that, a pure circus. You all didn't get elected to conduct the circus, and everybody that's on that council may not be participating in the circus, but it's my belief that the citizens want you all to do what you were elected to do. The fighting and all that, it's really timeout for it, to be honest with you. Do what you were elected to do. And that's the people's business to govern as that word been tossed around. And you can't do that when certain people are steady fighting back and forth. I'm sick of it. And I'm quite sure there's a lot of other citizens sick of it. And then to that point, there's a lot of people that likes to see it continue. I'm not one of those people. I want y'all to do what we elected you to do. Do the people's business, get the city back in order, and make it the best Lamarck that it can be. So when people speak of Lamarck, they may join in and say, it's sunny in Lamarck. And instead of being the laughing stock of Galveston County, because that's just where we are. Every time somebody asks me about Lamarck, they say it's pathetic. The leaders are not leading. And I, I, I tend to have to agree with that. These meetings lasting six, seven hours don't make any sense at all. I'm just asking you all to do what you were elected to do, and that's the people's business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Kyle, are there any other persons online? Very good. Thank you for item three, and we're now moving to item four. New business items presented to council for the discussion, for discussion and possible action. Review and discuss proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five departmental budgets and all funds. Mr. Garcia, on last week, I believe we reached a stopping point where your staff was tasked with connecting some dots, right? On, on certain fund balances and certain projections. And so it's been about a week. And so what I would like for you to do with your staff, to answer, fill in some of the questions, all the, all of the questions if you can. Let's do that and then move into revenue projections, so the council can make sure that we're setting the revenue appropriately. And then we can start getting back into this budget. Don't have a lot of time today. Hopefully, we can get this done today and we won't have to come back, according to Mr. Ross. Let's get into this. Council, I am going to have to be a little bit more assertive and aggressive with moving us along so that we can expedite this process and get the people a budget. Very good. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. Since last week, lots taken place. What we've done is we have gone back through history. Kyle, could you show the twenty twenty one sheet from the twenty twenty one budget? Historically, what's happened in our budget book is we've had sheets that show where we are with our revenue. Could you blow that up a little bit, Kyle? This is your sheet for twenty twenty one. This is from the twenty twenty one budget that was adopted, twenty one, twenty two, if I'm not mistaken. As you notice, this is the infamous three-year sheet. A couple of things that we noticed here is the way that they're not necessarily separated chronological order. And again, this is not to talk about myself, anybody else. This is just in general, just telling the story of how we got here. Okay, so I, 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 I really wanna preface that. Could you scroll down to the bottom of the sheet? These numbers here show that the end of, this is twenty one, twenty two, right, Kyle? Twenty one, twenty two, the ending balance, projected estimated ending balance was thirty five million, one fifty seven. Could you scroll up? That's proposed ending balance, where we proposed we were gonna end twenty twenty two. Okay? Kyle, could you go to the next year? This is now the same sheet. Notice it's a little bit shorter. Same, same idea. This is the one that ends in projected balance for the end of twenty twenty three. If you scroll down to this one, it now shows a much lower number. Go up again, please, for the labeling of the last column. Projected any balance of twenty three. Before we can start asking any questions, this is where we need to focus on, and this is what we have focused on, Christine has focused on. We have met with every single one of our bond council. We found some things that have not been allocated properly dating back to nineteen ninety seven. Okay, just some things here in general, projects that were done, whatever the case is. We're not placing blame. We're not saying anything.
Say that, say that last part again. You did, there were what now?
There was one project that we found, the Texas Water Development Board, some, some type of project that took place in the city in nineteen ninety seven. I don't know it yet. Again, I'm not gonna answer all the questions today. I'm just letting you what we've uncovered in the last week. As we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, you said as you went back, you found, you, you made a statement, we found items that were not allocated?
So what happens is, is whenever a bond is distributed, bond or a loan or anything of that nature, grant, anything, you have to execute on it. In this case, again, and I'm going by speculation because we're still looking for the historical documents from ninety seven. If you attain any certain amount of dollars, you need to make sure that you use those dollars. So for example, a municipality cannot go out and get a bond for ten million dollars and just let it sit in the bank. That's called arbitrage. That is illegal. Why? Because if I let it sit in an investment account, it will, it will gain more in interest than what we're paying for it. Otherwise, every city government would go out there and just get bonds and let them sit in the bank and then gain interest. You have to complete the projects. If you remember, a year ago or so, we started the bond allocation project. You told me there were some funds left over and some bonds. We did some research. We got some numbers from our, 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 our finance team then, and we allocated those bonds. Okay, we allocated those numbers. If you remember, it's a sheet, it's in your, it's in your binders under tab thirty. It is for reference, if you need it, but it's that bond allocation sheet that we did. Bottom line is this council deserves numbers. These residents deserve numbers, and they deserve for them to be right. It's gonna take us some time to go back in time and find a snapshot of where we were. If today was September thirtieth of, what year was that, twenty three? All right, actually, scroll up a second. What was, what's the actual there? See where it says estimated ending balance of twenty two? Scroll down to all that way down on that column. That says twenty six point, what is that, five nine two? I should be able to go back in time to September thirtieth of twenty twenty two, and I should be able to count for twenty six million, five hundred ninety two dollars and seventy seven, seven hundred seventy five cents. If I look at that snapshot, and every year that I go back, I should be able to do that. That there's still work to be done there. I cannot do that yet. There are some things that we don't have access to, to go back that far. We're looking through it, but it is, it is a labor of love. So we've met with bond council. We found out all the bonds have been issued and tying them back account to our accounts and to our investment accounts. The numbers look close, but they're not to the penny yet. So until they're to the penny, I'll ask this council to please let us get them down to the penny when it comes to your balances. Because if you look at the next one, could you show the, the one from last year, please, Kyle? This is the most recent one that's been passed. You see where it says projected ending balance of twenty twenty four? Scroll down, please. This shows that at the end of this year, according to that, at September thirtieth, in all of our funds, we should have twenty two million, five hundred seventy two thousand, three fifty three. That's the budget, but every single these sheets that have been shown on your screen this morning are from the adopted budget books. I need to be able to prove that. So now all these budgets that were passed in perpetuity, leading back to whatever it was, we need to make sure that they match a hundred percent. We've gotten a lot of work done. We've answered a lot of questions on how, but we're not to the point of presenting this three-year sheet right now. We're close. We're close. And, Miss Christine, just so many's morning, the auditor is available to answer some questions if you have on that. But when I tell you a number, I wanna put my name behind it. And if I don't see the money in certain, if I don't look at, at our logic account and see the zeros at balance with the ones in Texas pool, with the ones at Texas First Bank, with the ones anywhere else, to Mr. Osteen's point that he always makes, if it's not there, I can't say it. If I can't prove it to the penny, I won't report it. I'd rather tell you I need more time to make sure it's a hundred percent accurate. That's where we are with the funds. I want to also tell you, from where we were two budget meetings ago, you, you asked us to go back to zero-based budgeting. The only things that we did different was to allocate for certain things that we were gonna need more of that you guys addressed, asked us to address, which was the overtime, the fuel, and the CBAs for fire and police. That's the only things that we added to your zero-based budget that was presented to you. When we left here, depending on whatever rate you chose, there was a certain amount of dollars that would have been left. What we've done since last week, if we found every which way to give you different scenarios that we're ready to show you today as to what you would get for those dollars, should you pick whichever tax rate you would like. The story before you is, is your funds and your fund sheets, the way that we're organizing now, one, they're gonna be in order. Two, they're going to add up. You're not gonna have zero funds anymore. Okay? Christine, did you send Kyle the one that you're working on so far that's in draft form? Yes. Could you send it to him real quick so we can show that?
The three-year fund balance, that's the one you want up? Is that the one season?
Yes, please, yes, please.
Is this not in our book?
Everything I've shown you so far, everything that's up here right now, has been in your previously adopted budget books. These are the budgets that council or previous councils have passed.
These are, these are, no, 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 which I'm not disagreeing with you. These are the summaries of funds that were in the budget.
Correction. Yes, sir. Yes.
So, so we were not necessarily passing these summary of funds.
Correct.
They were just part of the budget presentation, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. I apologize. I think in the latest budget book, they're in the early twenties, like twenty, page twenty three, twenty two, twenty four, twenty seven, somewhere there. For reference, for anybody at home who has all the budget books.
For what years? I'm sorry.
This would have been the last three years. We, we've been asked specifically about the last three years, and this is what, 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 what we've done. It's gonna, if I need to go back further in that, it's gonna take longer. That's how we uncovered the fact that we had an account. Correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Turner, we have an investment account with Texas Water Development Board fund sitting there that's labeled nineteen ninety seven T W, Texas Water Development Board, T W D B, correct?
That's correct, yes.
We gotta go find what that's for, because if I present that, you're gonna ask me, what's that? And I don't have an answer for you yet. I know that T W D B usually stands for Texas Water Development Board, but now we gotta go back to the development board and ask them for records that are twenty seven years old. And see if we can help. I don't know the total, but I'm out. We, we have to look it up and tell you. But this is the type of thing that we've started to uncover. Okay? And it's not.
I'm sorry. No, we, we've started digging real deep. So when we don't have that answer today, it's because we're still working, but we have something to show you. Because that first one that was presented in the first book, I relied on the information from the previous year. And then that's where all the questions came. The one-point-million thing came up. So I had to go back to the drawing board, speak with Brooks Watson. I told him, I said, hey, y'all gonna have to give us accurate numbers, and they did. So that's gonna clear up the one point five. Everything looks reasonable now.
Say that last part again. You said, you, you, you said, you said something to the effect that you were gonna have a conversation with Brooks Watson?
Yes, we did.
And, and you did, and they are going to clean up the one point five.
No, no, the whole, because when you looked at that first three-year fund balance report that was presented on day one or day two, you were calculating and you found a difference of like one point five million or something.
Between the, between the fund balances, right?
Yeah.
When we were, right, right, I got you.
Right. Those were not accurate. I relied, I moved totals forward relying on the previous report.
I got you.
So now in consulting with the auditors, because I said, hey, I need you guys to clean up this entire report and make it make sense, the right numbers, and they did. So, and that's what you're gonna see here.
So I'm gonna ask Kyle to please show where our investment quarterly report is. I just, we're, we're trying to go real time so we can keep this from a hundred percent.
So if you're doing this, Mr. Garcia, to expedite this, uh, uh, Miss Turner, let's source it, right?
Yes.
I don't, I don't want any that you brought numbers
No.
from your house.
No.
Let's source these numbers where they're coming from, right? Who we vetted, who we used to kind of make these numbers real, so the people can, so there, there are no questions later. Let's do it now.
Hundred percent agree. What you've shown, the first three sheets that we showed you on there were the ones that were in the budget book. Which when we got here, when Miss Turner, on Miss Turner's first day was when we passed the budget. So she walked into that sheet. That's the last sheet that was shown. We now need to go back and verify in time back to her first day to go back and say, if that's the amount that we said was there, let's go verify that. So that's part of this that we need to do on our own, regardless of when, what, whatever y'all decide to do as, as any other actions you wanna take. That's what we're doing in the meantime now, because we need to know what the numbers are now. And that's what we're working on doing. In addition to that, what's on your sheet now, this is, again, when we talk about sourcing thing, this is our quarterly ended detailed report. This is as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. Okay, Miss Turner just sent us this. We're posting it. Please scroll down. Can you blow this up a little bit? Are you able to?
Yeah.
The column where it talks about what is invested right now. And again, all this stuff is gonna be available in the final report, but I'm giving you what we've done since this past week. This shows you every single account that we have invested, what it's titled, what it's the source, where it's invested, the acronym, the amounts, the interest, everything else. Scroll all the way up, please, Kyle. And scroll all the way to the right to see the, the labeled column. Keep going. Okay, now go all the way to the bottom where it says book value. All the way scroll to the bottom. That number should be twenty nine, if I'm not mistaken. There it is. That's what you currently have your value. That's invested. That's the twenty nine, one fifty seven, five eighty two, forty six. That is inclusive of all of your funds that you have sitting in investment as of June thirtieth. So what we have is we have pictures of time. That's where we're standing on June thirtieth. We gotta go back and look at where we're standing on September eleventh, I think, was your first day, September, someday in September that was your first day. We gotta go back and put the pictures together to find out where we are. Have you revenue in, expenses out. Yes. Yes.
First observation. Mr. Garcia, sometimes you talk so fast and you get excited, right? And I have difficulty keeping up with what you're saying. That that's number one. So I'm just asking you, slow down, all right? That's number one. Uh, uh, number two, please remember that. Now, I I can't see that. Well, that that I can see, but I look at this online. Okay, in terms of the presentation. And so I'm looking at the YouTube. And so please remember that anybody else that's watching it, and there are others watching it, there's a delay on the YouTube presentation. And and once again, that gets back to the talking so fast and moving. Give us time to catch up and everybody to catch up. And I don't know how long the delay is. It looks like it's about maybe ten seconds or something.
About thirty seconds.
Oh, thirty seconds. Okay, and so that we're we're just trying to catch up. I'm just trying to analyze it from what I'm seeing.
Seconds, just to clarify, isn't the talking and the video catching up? That is what we are seeing in real time here, and then thirty seconds, that's what I've seen on YouTube.
Oh, alright, I'm just.
There's just thirty seconds.
The reality that there's that delay there, just trying to keep up here with that. And and then lastly, just to confirm, in in the the fund balance, which would be considered our reserves, our reserves. We have this twenty nine million, one hundred and fifty seven thousand, correct?
That, okay.
Go ahead.
Those are dollars that are invested.
Those, but those are invested dollars.
Yes.
What what's considered our, but that in terms invested would be our fund balance.
If we had to liquidate today, that is how much we can.
Exactly, that's that's in effect that also says that's our reserve.
Well, it's bond money. I mean.
Not all of it.
No, not all of it. Not all of it. You're right. Not all of it. But some of it is reserved from bonds to pay for projects.
That that I understand.
But if we had, if the city went under tomorrow, that's money that we have that we can grab to save the city.
Exactly. That's why we call it our reserve. We it's our little savings that we have there, but but not in a normal sense.
Right.
Uh, it's it's there. We're earning interest off of it as well, too. I think I saw a line for interest
Right.
as well, too, on on this side. So and to my question, then going back to the previous, I think we said that 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 amount represented how many days of reserve?
As of the end of twenty twenty three, the three point seven million dollars in reserves represented seventy seven days, correct?
Yes.
Three point seven.
Which is up, I think it was seventy one days the year before.
Correct, it was around seventy one, seventy two.
So so that we we understand all on a math, because as I said, that's not necessarily my area, but we've got this fund balance of the twenty nine, not to confuse the the number that was up there previously, so sorry, the twenty nine million.
That's twenty nine million.
And and then from that, we take out those things that are restricted, that are restricted.
Right.
And then that brings us to the three point seven million, which we call then our reserve.
That is your general fund.
Reserve.
General fund reserve.
And and our.
Point seven. And if you look on the fund balance report.
Yes, ma'am.
You'll see. FY twenty three ending fund balance is three point eight million.
Okay.
Your next question is going to say, well, you told me it was three point seven.
Yeah.
Okay. That consists of inventories, that's forty thousand, two hundred and fifty two dollars. It also consists of prepaid of sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy four dollars.
Yes.
And then the rest of it is three point seven, three million, seven hundred and thirty two thousand, two hundred and eighty four dollars. That's considered unassigned.
Okay.
So that makes up that number. There's no more one point five million, one million. This is from the auditors of what our rainy day money is.
Rainy, that's a good way to put it. Rainy day or and and Mayor, our, while we don't have a policy, we have talked about a the a goal of keeping that at ninety days. Is that correct? Am I accurate in saying that? Okay, but we formally, like other cities, have established policies to that effect to give guidance to a finance director. I have not seen one here on, I just put that aside. I'm just saying that's an, I'm parking that over here. There may be something we visit in the in the future. Okay, all right, that I think that caught up now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Let let me, let me ask, the reserve, uh, the general fund is, did you say three point eight? There's three point eight million dollars?
Three point eight million.
What were we thinking it was yesterday? Our last time we met?
I need to look at the old report. Do you remember Caesar, what we said?
I want to say it was the same number. As far as three point, you're asking how much was in reserves? It was three point seven, and now it's three point eight. You have the explanation from the auditor on that?
No, I'm no, the 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 last sheet that we got before we we did these numbers. Uh, it has, it looks like four point eight million on mine.
That's it then. Okay.
Okay, and so now it's three point eight.
Just the corrected, correct amount.
And that's the difference of roughly a million dollars.
That's where that that whole discussion of that came about.
Okay, how did it get from, and we may not know, but I'm just trying to make it easier for people to digest. How did we get from four point eight million to three point eight million? Do we know yet?
Mayor, we don't know yet. That sheet that was shown to you was a sheet from last year. We still need to dig into that, find out what happened.
Mike, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you, can you answer that question of maybe how we got there? Was it because of incorrect figures rolling forward?
And who's and Mike, who are you, just for the for the record?
Mike Brooks with Brooks Watson and Company on the auditor.
You're the auditor. Well, we just wanted, again, for our folks uh, here and at home, we just wanted to make make sure that folks know who's who. So I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
So I was, this was brought to my attention, uh, some of the discrepancies that you guys were concerned about. As far as where the schedule came from, the original schedule and and how those numbers were generated. Uh, it's, I'm not, I'm not real sure. So the source of the the difference is somewhat unknown. So we we plugged in the audited numbers and and that's the schedule that you're seeing today.
Could the source of the difference be error and calculation in in numbers and figures?
It could be, or it could have been just the, uh, maybe the grouping of some of the individual funds, um, being presented differently. But I don't think it was something that was being tied out to the final audit numbers where which is the source of where we got ours. So, um, it could have been a combination of of several factors. I'm not sure.
Mayor, I think I can answer that question. If you look, if on this spreadsheet now, the auditors have grouped it the way it should be grouped.
Which spreadsheet?
Total, oh, I'm sorry.
Which one?
Um, the the correct, the new one.
These new sheets that we've been putting up, I know that we may not have had time to put them up online, but do the does the council have these sheets?
We don't because they're not finished yet. We're it's 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 a working sheet that we're still working through, and I don't want to give it to y'all. And folks think that the final number is final. We're we're, we have to go account by account by account. And if I give you all the accounts are summarized on one page. Does that summarize that, Ms. Turner?
Well, on the sheet, I I kind of know how to answer this question.
Okay.
On the first sheet, there was a general fund line. And it was for four point four million, let's say. We were only relying on that as the general fund number.
Ms. Turner, can you just stop one sec? We want to make sure everybody has, which sheet are you talking about? Is this the sheet you're talking about?
No, yes.
This sheet, okay.
Is that the newest one that we just let the auditors present? That's the one we need to put up?
I wasn't emailing.
Okay, so let's, let's do this. I I do get, just really quickly, I do get that you don't want to give us any more information that proves itself out to be inaccurate. I see that that is your attempt. Uh, but the council needs to have something to be able to look at, right? So if we, but 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 I do understand where you're coming from, Mr. Garcia. So perhaps we might have a, uh, something on that sheet that would say, uh, you know, not final numbers, right? So that all of us on council can see this is the latest workup, but it's not the final numbers. Everybody at home can see not the final. And I see what you're you're trying to say.
Yes, sir.
But when we put things on a screen that we can't grab, right? And then we ask for it, even though you have a legitimate explanation, right? We're building trust here. So if we can maybe work that out at some point, again, good thought, good thought. I get where you're going with it, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. You don't want to give us anything that that will be questioned later. I get that, and I think we all get that now.
Yes.
So we're going to not make those assumptions. Did you want to proceed?
Yes.
Three point eight, four point eight to the, four point eight to three point eight?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
On the previous sheet that was given to y'all at the beginning of the budget process, budget workshop process, it had what you stated was like four million. That it was labeled as one line as general fund. But now.
This sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, when you see this correct this spreadsheet, the orders have grouped it as it should be presented. Total general fund. So if you notice on the first line, it says zero one general fund. If you go to FY twenty three ending balance, there's that four million. We were relying and making statements on that four million. And we were saying that we had a fund balance of three point seven. And then that's where that discrepancy arrived.
You lost, you lost me on that one.
Okay, let me see. How can I say it? Okay, on the first, very first sheet.
So you gave us you, which try to expedite, you gave us a sheet.
Um, the, in your book, on that very first book, the first couple of days. There was a three year fund balance sheet.
That's this sheet here.
Yes, sir. And isn't on there a line that says general fund?
General fund is at the top and the ending balance is four point eight.
There you go.
All right, I got that.
And I was quoting, hey, we have an ending fund balance of three point seven.
Why were you doing that?
Because that's what it was.
Where did you get your numbers from?
From the audit. Our FY twenty three audited financial statement.
The closing number to the audit was three point eight. That's what Mr. Mike reported when he came here and made your presentation.
I got you. So you you were trying to report the auditors' numbers?
Yes, but then that number, the rolling numbers, it didn't, it didn't make sense.
Okay.
And then that's where the 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 whole controversy about the one million, one point five million came about. Why are you showing four point eight, but you're saying we have fun balance of the general fund of three point seven? Since then, the auditors have presented this the way it should be presented. And I'm going to move it forward this way. So now.
And so you get ready to show us that now?
Total general fund.
All right, thank you.
There's going to be a total general fund. That includes general fund, buy you fest, fire reserve, donations, all these different funds that are noted as total general fund. So now, all those funds are added together, roll forward, and now we're at FY twenty three ending balance of three point eight. And I just noted to you and told you what the three point eight consists of.
Where do you see three point eight? On this sheet?
Total, go to the first section. It has total general fund. And if you go to the right, FY twenty three ending balance. Three million, eight hundred thirty. Okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I see.
Now, that three point eight million consists of inventories. This is just not cash. And I don't want anyone to think that these dollars are cash. It can include your inventories, it can include, um, receivables, payables. This is just not a hard cash number.
One of these reports, I saw those listed. The one of the ones that you put on the screen, it had it at the bottom, what those items.
Yes, yes. So that three point eight consists of three numbers. Inventories, prepaid, and our unassigned fund balance of three point seven million.
Unassigned fund balance.
So is it kind of making sense now?
It's starting to make a little bit of sense.
Okay.
So so basically, the controversy was that you moved, you did not use, and use a bad, I'm not.
Okay.
We didn't verify the numbers that were carried over from before you got here.
Correct.
We're not even talking about what what those numbers are. You just didn't verify.
I did not verify. I just grabbed the spreadsheet because it was in the budget. Okay, I'm thinking, okay, this was approved in the budget. I can rely on this. Let me go ahead and move these numbers forward. That was incorrect.
The number, this number, and this is important for our community, this number, this three point eight million dollars is a number that was given to you by our auditing firm.
Yes.
Okay, that's the source of that number.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia, but you need a microphone. Please, sir.
Mr. Mike's also available to verify that, so he can give the explanation of how he came with those numbers, the difference from the three point eight to the three point seven. There's a sixty thousand dollar and a forty thousand dollar transaction. If you could please explain that to be crystal clear on everything.
Hello, Mike?
Yes. Yeah, so the the fund balance numbers that you see, there's there's total fund balance, and then there's the unassigned, what's considered unassigned portion. Um, certain types of assets will result in a what's called a, an unavailable, um, or a non-spendable portion of your fund balance. So if you're looking at your fund balance, you have, you have total assets, your cash receivables, um, other assets, and then you have, you have all your payables. So the net of those two are going to be your your ending fund balance. Well, that that ending fund balance is also going to be broken into different categories. And, um, a portion of that three point eight is related to your inventories and prepaid expenditures. So they're not, they're not in a a form, a liquid form that can be spent for available expenditures. So they're considered non-spendable.
Go ahead, Joe.
Once again, you're I'm looking at this, this is, this is our provisional one. Right, provisional with the accurate. While you continue to work with the CPA and
Yes.
and yourself to track these. And I also heard by way of summary that some documentation way back is something you're still working on to help clarify this. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that?
I I heard that this issue with regard to a bond in the past.
Yes, we're still going to be researching that with the bond.
For the backup documentation. And of course, in in the context of of, uh, an audit, um, our our present auditors, that was not something that that they would have been aware of in the context of a normal, of a normal comprehensive audit. Is that accurate, Mike?
Yeah, that that's somewhat accurate. There's, there's a lot of, a lot of smaller accounts that have been have been in place, um, for quite some time that that go back as far as Caesar mentioned, back to nineteen ninety eight, I believe. So, um, there, there should be some research into those accounts to find out if there is any sort of restriction or if they are, um, if they are available, uh, today. Uh, my, my guess is most of those accounts have, have not had, have not been released from the restrictions in the past. Which just needs to be verified. So as far as going back and digging into those numbers, uh, I think that needs to be done before it's it's considered final.
And there's one line here that is still confusing. But if if I'm accurate in saying this, please just confirm that. As of the end of the As of the end of the, of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, right? That would be twenty-three, twenty-four on the disaster line of seventy. This is showing a negative of one point seven million? Is that accurate?
That's accurate. Yeah, so prior to our time, I believe this fund was used for, um, hurricane expenditures and other potentially great reimbursable grant-related expenditures. And that's, uh, continued to, to be utilized for that. The big, the big deficit that you're seeing, uh, is primarily related to your, um, your COVID expenditures. So during those years, there were, uh, all the COVID expenditures that you had, which were potentially gonna get applied to the, your, your COVID grant, were recorded in this, in this disaster fund. So you had more, more expenditures than you did grant reimbursements coming in. The city did receive the COVID funding, but it just has not been applied to those particular expenses. So right now, it's showing a deficit, uh, but you still have those COVID, the ARPA funds available to be able to apply to those. Um, it just has not been done.
And, the, the COVID, uh, allocation occurred in twenty-one, when we received those dollars, or received those dollars in twenty-one. So, uh, I, I, I don't need an answer now, but I, I would like one. At what point do we close out that, that account? See, once again, it's, they're challenging. What, close out an account, uh, is, uh, is what I'm, I'm wondering there. And then, on the previous report, is it, is it accurate to still say, Ms. Turner, that you showed that we had, um, receivables outstanding for that account of, as I recall, some two point, some odd million dollars?
That is the money that he's referring to that we have not used, or we have available to us.
So that money is not a receivable, then? We actually have it?
We actually have it.
How, how, and how much, how much is that?
Uh, two point four, two point two million?
That is separate and apart from ARPA. Funds. These, these were COVID funds.
Which we used in, in, which we could use to, uh, cover our loss of revenue during the COVID years, which we did, actually. And so that, that adjustment has not been shown, is what you're saying.
Is that true, Mike, that we, we, we still have not shown that adjustment?
That's, yeah, and that's, the, the ARPA funds are extremely liberal on what they can be u- utilized for. They're, the election that the city can make is, is governmental, provision for governmental services, which can generally, generally be spent on anything other than in paying for pension and, and debt. And so it's more of a, uh, it's just an election on when you want to apply it. And we were told that, um, it was not applied during the year that it was received. So the, the thing that needs to happen is it needs to get budgeted for and allocated, going forward. And, and once it does, if you would like to apply it for any particular year, it can be applied.
So, so once again, putting a little up here, a little, uh, what is it called? A little, uh, post-it note, Mayor, up here on the board, is we, as a council, per request from you Finance Director, uh, needs that action to be taken on our part to formalize the allocation of the COVID dollars for the fiscal year, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then that'll, that'll be consistent with what we approved. That we just needed to close the, close the loop on that.
Yeah, but one of the, one of the, and, and I hear you, Mayor Parton, one of the questions that I have, uh, while we work through this, seems like we received about two point two million dollars. But it looks like in twenty twenty-two, we've allocated, uh, one point seven of those dollars, and then in twenty twenty-three, we, we allocated another one point seven, which is about three point four million. If I'm reading that right, is that correct? I'm still in disaster fund.
Where are you reading your numbers?
Uh, the, the latest, uh, sheet that Mr. Garcia.
FY twenty-two actual expenses, two point two. Is that what you're looking at?
Right, and then the next line says the ending balance in that account was a negative one point. Actually, I'm looking at it different. It says the ending balance in that account was one point seven. So I guess we had half a million, yeah, we had half a million, we carried over, and we overspent that account.
Yes.
About one point seven million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Understood this. Uh, uh, when I'm looking at this, in, in the fiscal year twenty, uh, two, it says, ending balance, it says actual expenses, two point two million.
Right, that means that we spent, yeah.
We actual expenses with an ending balance, but we received the COVID allocation. And actually, for fiscal year twenty-two, we didn't make that, that adjustment in terms of the, of the approval to make the transfers to cover that.
Right.
That's why it's.
So it looks like a negative.
Negative. And then it increased fiscal year twenty-three by, by that additional, what, thirty-something dollars?
Thirty thousand.
There are thirty thousand dollars. And we didn't, we didn't, once again, make, as I said, we didn't make this.
One point seven.
The allocation to the, one to the general fund and one to the cover this.
Are you sure that the allocation was two point two million dollars? The, the original COVID allocation, not the ARPA allocation?
I'll need to verify.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not gonna say yes or no.
That's okay, that's okay. Cause that makes, that makes that line item make sense. If not, we're looking at a scenario where we, where, um, I don't believe the council would have over budgeted that line item, but somehow, uh, that line item was misappropriated. Again, in COVID, things, right, being paid for. So we just need to clean that line item up as much as possible. Go ahead, Joe.
Mike, you're still on the line.
I am.
I don't see, I see the, the, the capital projects funds are, are the bonds. But as you, as Ms. Turner reported and you guys reported, there's still some question about a bond, bond proceeds back from nineteen ninety-seven. And I hope you guys can work that out because that's a one-way back. But what I don't see here, in terms of these three-year fund balances, even showing it as a, as a restricted account, is that now, switching, I don't see the ARPA allocation shown here anywhere. Where would that, where would that rightfully be reported?
On balance sheet.
So the, the ARPA funds are, are, uh, offset with a deferral, so a deferred revenue. So the revenue themselves have not been recognized yet. So you're, you have, you have your cash that, of two point two million, uh, and you have an offsetting liability of an equal amount, and they net out to zero. So once, once council makes the, uh, approves them to be applied to whatever expenditure you choose, then that liability will be released and the, um, the revenue would be recognized.
Mike, we're talking, you and I, we're, we're talking two different funds. There is a COVID fund that occurred prior to ARPA. COVID was federal disaster declaration. We received two point something, it's in our book here, I forget the amount. And we, and we were permitted to use that to offset lost revenue. That's number one. Then we have an allocation from the, of, uh, not the Affordable Care Act, the, um, American Rescue Plan. That's what we, we call ARPA. And that was four point something, about four point, no, I think.
Four point eight, four point two, four point two.
Two million. And, uh, that, so that, we're talking about two different items there. And, uh, that's, that's what I'm referring to. Where, where are we showing that? Have we, and, and actually, the city has re- received those funds already, uh, as I recall from a previous report.
Y- yeah, sorry, I was, I was referring to the ARPA funds. So we were, um, we were talking about two different grants. The, the COVID grant was, I believe that was received prior to our, our audit and had likely been spent. The remains of it could be in that, could be in Fund Seventy. I would, I would have to review it to make sure, but, um, I think that's one of those things, we're going back and, and digging back, you know, five to ten years on some of these, some of these old, old accounts would be, um, beneficial. Uh, but, but exactly where any remaining amount, I'm, I'm not sure. We did not, uh, I don't believe we audited the year where that was received. So the, the ARPA funds that, that you have at year end, those, that's the four million that you're referring to. And that's, those are the funds that I were, uh, that I was discussing.
Correct. And, and if we follow the normal practices of the past director, the, what, what was happening is we would get the money, she'd just move that to the, the, the investment pool. Uh, but without designating that it was there. So anyway. That's, that's another item there. All right, well, I hope that we can clean up the, there's just a lot of cleanup here that, that's necessary.
I have a question to add. So, so it, was it that you found more money sitting? I'm trying to understand. What, did you find more money that was sitting somewhere that wasn't really, you didn't know why it was there?
It's, if I could say it best as of right now, I would tell you that it's that, we're trying to identify which funds belong to which projects. So they can be properly allocated. So we can separate the difference of what's sitting in investments versus what's liquid versus what's got certain restrictions. So for example, that, that, those funds that we found in ninety-seven are sitting in an investment account. But doesn't mean we can use them for whatever we want. We have to go identify what that was for. We're trying to piece all that together to make sure everything matches to the penny. And as you can tell, it is a.
So this is a fund that you didn't know that you had, so.
Well, we didn't know the specifics of what it was for, but the dollars were sitting in investment. So we had calculated it through our investment account. But when asked, hey, what is this about? We didn't know what it was for. And I still, to this day, that may have been for a specific project. And we have to go back in history, find out, did we complete the project? Are we allowed to reuse those funds or something else? We, there's a lot of questions.
There's no narrative?
Not that we can find right now, not dating back to that specific one to ninety-seven. We haven't found it yet. But we're still looking for a narrative, if one existed at all.
So from here, from here on out, though, there will be narratives?
Yes. For, for example, every time that Ms. Turner does anything with her, um, journal entries, or anything that she does with investment accounts, even if it's an email, it's an email, it gets PDF, it gets attached to that. So now anybody, anywhere can know who sent the email, what's authorized, what's going on in that transaction, and it has to balance what's there. That's what we do now, moving forward.
So how long was our previous, uh, Finance Director with the city?
I, I have no idea.
We, we, let's, uh.
I just want, I just wanna know, of course, so how far we need to look back, to make, was it ten years, eleven years? Cause I, I, I think that's fair, Mary, to be able to, to understand all of our accounts. I, I find it interesting that we have monies that's sitting out there, and we don't know what it belongs to. So I'm trying to see how far do we need to go back? Just to, just to see. It's not to personally bash anyone. I just think that's a fair question.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's stand on that part of it, how far.
Can I, can I, can I answer that, though?
Let, let's not, let, let's.
No, without.
But, but let, let me be clear, right? Previous Finance Director, uh, has potential litigation against our city. So we don't wanna say anything about that person. But we can talk about going back a certain amount of years, things like that, financial operation as a whole. Go.
To answer that question, Councilman Yansey, we'll go as far as we need to, to, to get the results. It's not about who, what, where, no, it's about, hey, if we don't find the answers here, keep going. You don't find the answers here, keep going. We're, we're building a puzzle that's upside down right now, in the dark. We have no idea. We're, we're, we're trying to put it together. So it's like, this, and, and that's where we're at.
And the auditor discovered the nineteen ninety-seven investment.
Actually.
I did.
Oh, you discovered. And there was no, there was no, I, I, I'm just not understanding that part. So, and I, and I'm trying to see. So you discovered that it was there, but it's always been there, but you discovered it during what?
During the investment report.
Okay. And, and was that in our last budget report last year, that, that, that fund that she found?
Yes, ma'am. It was there, just wasn't labeled as something separate. One of the things that we've done with the bu- with the funds now, you notice your sheet's gotten longer. You notice this sheet is now two pages long? Is we're identifying every single fund separately. So for example, in last year's breakdown, that occurred of your utility fund. For whatever reason, there was some, some bond, uh, values that were listed as part of your utility fund, general fund. Your utility fund in general, right? So you had, I think it was funds two, three, forty, and forty-seven, were in within utilities. In our opinion, and even after talking to the auditor, each fund should have its own line and be its own separate entity. And that's what we're breaking down now. Cause it's hard to ask that question. Because if you look at that, it says we have, I think, eleven million dollars in our utility fund, but we don't. It's because there's bond dollars that are, we, we're, we're just separating it.
Okay, so, okay, so that makes a lot more sense.
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, what you're trying to do is make sure that it's done line by line. It's alligator, and what, because there are some, cause I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is, or do we have more? Did we discover more all of a sudden, or what? It's, it's just about, not yet. So you're still digging. Okay. I have another question, but I think I'mma look at something first before I ask it.
Anyone else? Mr. Ross, you have anything?
Yeah, so in your utility fund, line item forty, we start out with a negative five hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars. We spend a hundred sixty thousand, eight twenty-six. And then we do that again, and in twenty twenty-three, we have a negative eight fifty-three, one oh seven. And this was a nineteen ninety-eight, four point six million Texas Water District, uh, TWDB sewer rehab. Why are we spending money on an account that's already negative there?
These are some of the questions that we need to ask, to, to, to get answered and bring back to you. But this is how it's, this would explain why maybe they were put in united, but they still need to be separate. That account, what should happen is we should close it, bring it to zero, close it, and then move on. Now it's once at that zero, and it's a closed account, then we move on. It probably looks like something was inadvertently charged to that account when it shouldn't have been.
I just, it, well, in two years in a row, it's, it, the exact same amount. That's, um, I mean, it's kind of.
Were you done, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Tell, tell me again that, before we go to Mayor Parton, what line item were you looking at?
Uh, under the utility.
Which one? Gotcha, thank you. Mayor Parton.
The, um, and by the way, I see both of those are from nineteen ninety-eight. Ms. Turner, I I need, and, and I need some some resource information here on this item. We list these public improvement district funds here. In fact, there are five phases here. I, I don't know, I, I know a lot of them are the West End. But I don't know what they're, what they're tied to. We had a public improvement district, a Pid for the Walmart sand. That was one, I recall. We had one for Painted Meadows. And to my not, those are the only two that I'm aware of, that, that I've been told about or have seen on documents. Because the Omega Bay is a terrace. I don't know, maybe you.
So, so one of the things that this sheet will now have when we're done with it is a glossary, kind of in the back to keep going. So every fund will say what the narrative is of that fund. So my understanding, without having the backup in front of me, is that these five Pids that are shown there are all tied to Painted Meadows. I believe the, the one for, you're mentioning for Walmart, I believe has already been closed, but we need to verify that. So I believe this is for the five phases of Painted Meadows, because I believe there was five phases in that development, but we'd have to go back to triple check that.
Okay.
But in the future, though, you'll see this table. And if you have a question, well, what was, what was Fund Seventeen for? Well, you'll be able to flip to it and say seventeen was for Pid Phase One, is this section, this section, whatever it was.
Ms. Turner. Capital improvements. What does that three point five million dollars in, that ended in twenty two, what does that reflect? Because trying to track that account.
What fund are you looking at, ma'am?
Capital improvements is sixty five next to the line item.
I need to dig into that, ma'am.
Yeah, because it, it looks like to me, and I, and I'm trying to read both sides of it. Looks like we generated about three point three million dollars in that account. And the fiscal year actual revenues. Oh, I see, never mind, never mind. I, I got it. I wasn't lined up on my second page, I got it now. Disregard that, thank you. Council, any more questions for staff as it relates to this latest three-year fund balance sheet?
I have a question about line thirty nine. FY twenty twenty two actual expense, and I guess that was a glow grant, that went from three million to negative seventy six at the end of that year. So that money was expended during what? What was that money expended for? That's a big number to go down to.
What are you looking at?
What line? The last one on the page.
The very last line on the page, on the front page. The I recovery monies allocated from below.
I have no idea, would have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay, so that's the glow I recovery.
When you, when you say that you, y'all, when y'all are saying to us, y'all are looking to it and get back to us, are we talking about the end of the day?
I don't know that we'll.
We need at least a report.
Sure.
So even if it's, we hadn't found that one yet.
Sure.
So that we keep score.
Yep. And then also in the future, one of the things Ms. Turner and I have talked about doing, so you have an explanation for this, so whoever comes here afterwards can connect the dots. Is when someone's sitting here next year, whatever's happening, right? You can go back to read twenty twenty three expenses, and if it says, for example, if it said that there was three point two, three, three million two hundred and ten thousand nine twenty one. There should be a summary for twenty twenty three on that account, here's what happened in this fund. We, this much was put in investment, this much was spent on whatever. Except, so you have a to the penny tracking, that's of the point that we're working on getting this, but obviously, that's where this will take a lot of time and labor for every one of these funds. Nothing will happen on these funds without a full accountability. Obviously, your general fund will be tied to your budget. Utility fund, but all these other funds are the ones we got to break down to the penny with every single transaction calculated for its entire fiscal year for when we close it.
And Mayor and Council? It seems that as a council, y'all are in the dark about a lot of these funds. So it may behoove us in the near future that we have a meeting just with council and we talk about every single fund. And what that fund entails, what, what is the definition of that fund? How are money spent from that fund? Because there's a lot you guys don't know. And you're asking us, and I'm digging in, trying to figure everything out for you. So I think that's something that needs to happen.
I, I think that's an important statement that you just made, and I, I think that we need to double down on that. Our form of government, council manager form of government calls for council to do no, zero, non-administrative activities or administrative functions. Clerical, accounting, or otherwise. And so that's, that's a really important part that you're bringing up. Unless these things are brought to a council, we would not otherwise know that there may be issues in these areas, right? The only thing that a council can do is to learn from that and, and, and develop a process that will, that will outlive that particular council. Process of checks and balances. So that no matter which, which council, which finance director, which city manager sits in any of these seats, the process would be so comprehensive that these errors, if that process would be followed, these errors would be caught, right? In an, in a reasonable amount of time. So that's a good point that you, that you just brought up. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead, Joe, we're gonna, and then we're gonna try to shift into a different area.
Just one item of importance, and this is follow up on yesterday, and Mr. Brooks is on the line. As you undertake this comprehensive review of these accounts and the and the long established accounting procedures in finance. And you guys being new, including our auditors, right? We had a relationship for many years with the previous one. Mr. Brooks, I'm counting on you to report, and I say report, not just orally, I want to see something in writing, to say, look, we've, here's outcomes. We've been able to track accurately X, Y, and, and Z. We've done that. We've, we've, there's a level of, of, I as an auditor, I as a CPA, am comfortable with these, with these numbers. But I'm also counting on you, if, if it's necess to say to us these particular areas are red flags. Right? That there are, there, there may, there may be a necessity to undertake a deeper look to these areas. And then if, and provide us what that deeper look would, would, would mean. If that means we need a forensic audit in this area, then I'm just, say it. Just looking for, for input in that area. Or there are other avenues short of a forensic audit, there are, that are alternatives as well. And say this can be also accomplished in this manner. Mr. Brooks, am I clear? Any questions there?
Yeah, no, I think that's, that would be part of what we could do for you, once we started digging into these accounts. And, and some are going to be obvious and, and easily resolvable, and others may still have some question marks and require a little more, a little more digging or or something, something different. So if we encounter any of those, we will absolutely work with the city on it and be transparent on what we find.
So, so that, so that last number, or at the bottom, where it says totals sixty seven. Is that sixty seven? I don't know, my eyes, what is that, sixty seven million? So that has to do with all of our bond money that we've got and all of the grants?
No.
That's not all?
That's twenty four expense, budget expenses.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you probably want to look under FY twenty three ending balance, the forty six million. It's the third row over from the right.
No, no, I see it. I just, I mean, I just was a little blown away right quick.
Okay.
I listened. So I think that's the question I had, but I, I'll come back to that. I'm, I'm just looking at.
Okay.
So let's, before we, before we start switching gears, we're kind of in, 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 in this question answer phase of what, what happened last week, or week before last. Week before last, I believe, Mr. Garcia was asserting that the council directed, was it one point one or one point two million dollars from, from ARPA Recovery, whatever, COVID Recovery Funds to augment our budget from last year. Are you still standing by that statement? And again, no right or wrong, we're just trying to get to the bottom of it.
I misstated.
Okay.
Whether it was disaster money versus COVID money. The direction that was given was for it to come out of those COVID funds, those dollars that were there. So I apologize for misstating that at the time. But not ARPA.
The actual COVID era relief funding.
Yes, which was deposited into the disaster fund, which probably should have been separate, but.
Okay. And you can, you can track that. You can show that, what you just said. And the auditor would be able to validate and confirm that.
Usually a transfer like that wouldn't be done until end of the year. But yes, that is trackable, because the funds would be allocated from, from that account. That, that will be trackable at the end of the year, should have been allocated properly, and it wasn't.
Can you break out what, what parts of the budget last year council directed you to use those COVID funds for? Again, going back to what I believe Mayor Porton was suggesting. Or maybe it was the auditor was suggesting that these, those funds, those monies can be used for, and even Ms. Turner, I think, said, said this as well. For a myriad of things outside of retirement, I thought I heard you say, and things of that nature. But, but we want to make sure we're tracking those dollars. That was a statement that we want to make sure that we validate and verify if that is true. And then what were those things? Because it's important, because we don't need to necessarily sit in a place that we are trying to meet or match that, that level of output, you know, in our, in our, our services. Without having the ability to match those resources, right? That, that those COVID monies are not perpetual. You know, they have an expiration. And so if we are using those monies legally to reach a certain level of service and then trying to maintain that service, and there are no more COVID monies, the council needs to be aware of that, because then we will be in to a reserve funding situation. So that's why that particular validation is important to myself. The other thing that has very little to do with this fund balance sheet is the idea that on last we left off, and then I'll, I want you to, to move into revenue, revenues real quickly. On last we left off, this Fund Ninety Nine, is it Fund Ninety Nine?
Yes.
It seemed like we would remember that, I think.
There's, there's.
It seemed like that's the horror film or something.
There, there's two ninety nines. There's a general Fund Ninety Nine, then there's a utility Fund Ninety Nine.
So the, which Fund Ninety Nine, refresh my memory, was it the utility Fund Ninety Nine that had the one hundred thousand dollars allocated for what was it for position?
For salary adjustments for the utility fund.
And then, then you said one point one million allocated for a possible grant match. Was, was that coming out of utility fund?
Yes, remember, I told you we took that off, because you got a more accurate number.
Right, so when you.
Took that, all of our grants.
So when we took it off, one point one million plus one hundred thousand is one point two million. When we took it off, and I looked at that number again, that line item again, it was, it had only went down maybe about five hundred thousand dollars, or seven hundred thousand, somewhere in there, but it was not the entire one point two million in the, in that next version of numbers. So I would like an answer to that. Again, that, this is, you know, one thirty seven, you know, give me that answer three, four, five o'clock later on today. I don't want to put you on the spot right now for it, but I'd like to have that ran down as well.
Ms. Turner, could you work on that while I do the revenues? Is that, is that fair?
That's fair. So what I've asked, and we, unless there are any further questions on this, what I've asked Mr. Garcia to do was go over some of the fun, the fun balances to, to show us that we're on the right track and making sure we know exactly what we have. And now he's going to talk a little bit about revenue, because it's council's responsibility to set revenue. Property tax, sales tax, and there are all sorts of different revenue streams. And we have not had an opportunity to examine that. And so he's going to go through those revenue streams and talk to us about any proposed changes he made. We can add to those changes, we can take away from those changes, or we can support those changes. But he needs, he's going to give us an overview so that we can at least be in the ballpark with what he was thinking. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
No problem. If, if we can show the screen, this is the same sheet that I believe is in everybody's budget books, I believe it's the same one that's online. Can you show the? Yeah, there you go. So what, what Kyle's about to pull up is your general fund revenue sheet, okay? And right now, can you blow up a little bit? Don't, don't show the blue yet, we want to stick with the white if we can. Scroll to the left there, okay, there we go. So this is a little bit of story here. As, as far as the narrative, in twenty twenty three, there was an actual expended amount of sixteen million five forty five three seventy, excuse me. And I expended, I apologize, of revenue that came in. Sixteen million five hundred forty five thousand three hundred seventy. That is what came in according to the audited numbers, correct, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
This past year was budgeted for revenue was set the next column over seventeen point five million, so seventeen million five forty one four fifty three. That's what we budgeted, or we projected that we were going to hit for revenue numbers this fiscal year. You notice that's an increase of almost exactly one million dollars. We propose that we were going to bring in roughly one million dollars more than we did the previous year. Okay, that's the budgeted twenty four column. We talked about a snapshot in time, so as of July of twenty twenty four, or eighty three percent of the year, or ten months through the year, the actual that was shown in our accounts by those breakdowns was fourteen point eight million dollars. So we had brought in fourteen point eight as of July of twenty four, or eighty three percent of the year, or ten months in the year. All right, so that was as of July thirtieth, that's what we had actually brought in. Based on those figures, we now estimate that we're going to bring in eighteen point three to end the year. So if we went forward in time and we went to September thirtieth of twenty twenty four, we estimate that we will have brought in in revenue eighteen point three million dollars. That's where we think we're going to end the year at, based on, of what we received thus far. So we thought we were going to bring in seventeen five. Okay? We thought we were going to bring in seventeen point five. As of this date, we had brought in fourteen point eight. But we propose that we're going to end the year at eighteen point three. If you notice that sales tax is lower, because I think I heard that mentioned before. We did budget for a higher amount, but we still think that we're going to end the year higher than we were last year. If you notice, we're estimating that we're going to end at five point six two. Last year, we ended at five point four. Hopefully, that number is even higher, and we can report in two months that that number is higher. That's a snapshot of where we ended last year, where we projected to be this year. Where we were as of July thirtieth and where we think we will be September thirtieth. That is your one year snapshot. Of where we think we will be. Some line items are outperforming the previous year, some not quite. But at the end of the day, your total for all of those accounts show an amount that is higher than it was that we ended the year last year. An amount of roughly one point, and again, I'm doing really quick math, about one point eight million dollars more than we ended last year. If our projections are true. Okay. Kyle, could you please scroll over to show one column? Please understand that this tax rate that is shown up there at forty one cents is just for this exercise. We're not saying we are not here to propose a tax rate. We are here to show you different examples. The only real number that changes in the next three blue columns that you're going to see. Is the top column that shows property tax. So you see where right now estimate FY twenty four says five point four. We estimate that that number, if you were to pick that rate. Goes up to six point roughly six point three million dollars, six million, two hundred ninety four thousand, three hundred and twenty two. That's the number that that line item would go to, should you pick that rate. Kyle, can you please roll over one more to the right? If you notice, every one of those other line items except for property tax is exactly the same in this next column. The only number that is different is the property tax. It is lower if you select that rate of what we're calling the forty cent rate. Which if you round up is actually closer to forty one, but just for the sake of conversation, we're going to call that the forty cent rate. Notice the difference is shown below at a one hundred and eighty eight thousand, one hundred twenty six dollars. That is the difference of proposed revenue that we would receive with a forty one cent tax rate versus a forty cent tax rate. That is the difference. That is the amount, and it's only shown there from property tax. Now, if you look one line lower, I did skip a part. You notice the second line down, the five point nine six seven. We have been fairly aggressive with our sales tax. If you notice, last year, we're on pace to 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 be. Quite a bit higher than we're estimating we're going to end the year at. We're even more aggressive than we budgeted to be last year. We thought we were going to end the year at five point seven. We're on pace to end at five million, five hundred and sixty two. Those projections that are so aggressive this year are because this year, starting October one. We can confirm that we now have a raising canes. We now have a salad and go. We're about to hopefully open this churches here. Those are things that we know right now are done. We also put into those calculations with the average, what we did to get those numbers where they were, is we took the average revenue, the average gross revenue. That a raising canes has. We took that average, multiplied it by the uh point two. Then subtracted the EDC portion, and that's how we got that number. We added that number for raising canes. We added a number for Chipotle. We added that number for salad and go, and we added that number for churches. That's what's shown there. That's how we estimated that number would go. From the estimated of five point five this year to the five point nine showing over four hundred thousand dollars. And proposed increases from sales tax. For reference, so you understand what that represents. For every one million dollars in gross sales. Two percent of that represents twenty thousand dollars. Of which we only get fifteen thousand because five thousand goes to the EDC. So just quick calculation, if roughly we're saying four hundred thousand dollars, okay? I take four hundred thousand dollars and I divide it by fifteen thousand dollars. We're estimating that in gross sales, the city will see. The businesses around will have an additional twenty six point six seven million dollars in sales. For us to receive the additional proposed four hundred thousand dollars. That's how we base those calculations. Those are merely our calculations based on what we know to be fact today. Hey, we would love for all these other businesses to open sooner. But we know how construction is right now, so we want to be aggressive, yet conservative to what we know is here and we know is coming and we know is imminent very soon. Having said that, we felt comfortable with that number, but again, council, it's your will. If you want to be more aggressive, less aggressive, whatever you want. But I want you to know how we got to that number there. Kyle, could you please go over one more column? You notice in this third column, there is a value, all the other lines are the same. You notice every single one, every last one of them has the same number projected for revenues. The only difference that you see is at the thirty nine cent rate, what we're estimating based on the tax calculation sheet. That we got certified by Cheryl Johnson's office, by 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 our tax commissioner's office. Is that we are going to bring in five million, nine hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Which is a difference of three hundred eighty five thousand dollars and ninety two cents from what the forty one cent rate is. Those are the differences. That is the difference between your rates that you are going to select. Based on our proposals of where our projections are for revenue today. What these proposals do not show any different, if you go back down, Kyle, could you scroll to the left just a split second? We've taken into account that we are going to do better in permits, licenses, and fees this year. We've taken into account that we're going to be slightly stronger than we were this year in partial recreation fees. We think we're going to be slightly less in miscellaneous taxes because based on what we did this past year. But if you notice those lines, on some lines were higher, on some lines were lower. On some were pretty much the same. So if you look at those numbers as they're budgeted, as we're estimating, that's where we ended the year. Scroll to just to the right, just a little bit, Kyle, just one column. Notice how those numbers go up and we're proposing. So we thought we were going to do. Two point four in revenues for permits, license, and fees. But we're estimating we're going to blow that number out of the water this year, hence why we are estimating the year at two point nine. So we outperformed our projections by four hundred and eighty, one hundred, four hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, if I'm doing my quick math there. Hence, next year, we're betting on continued growth. And we put those estimates at a very aggressive three point three million dollars. Now, none of these numbers that are projected here today show any any changes whatsoever to your fees. Because you haven't voted on those yet. They don't show any changes to your game room, schedule of fees, uh fines, anything that you want to make any changes to, those are not shown today. Should you want to make any of those changes, we will abide by them however you wish. These are our best estimates of where we think we're going to land based on our trajectory and based on what we know to be true today. I'll answer your questions on revenues before we move to expenses.
Let's uh let's be be, and this is what I wanted wanted the council to see, right? Counsel, we have an opportunity opportunity to uh, this is his projection. We can we can move those numbers based on what we see, uh and this is where. Uh we can we can make up the difference, so make up the distance. Uh based on uh some of the things that we discussed here, does not have, we don't have to have. Uh for example, and I won't, I won't, you know, we're going to discuss this later, but we don't necessarily have to have a forty one cent tax rate. Right? Uh there are other fees that we can adjust. There are other avenues that we can explore uh to reach that same level. Consequently, we may elect to have uh a forty one cent tax rate. But but this is the part that I wanted us to get to. This is kind of usually normally at the beginning of a budget. Uh budget workshop process, so we'll have, we'll decide how much we have to spend so that we can. You know, basically start spinning according to what our decisions are. But but it's it's good to have this discussion uh this afternoon as well. Again, property tax, sales tax, uh and fees are three areas of opportunity to to make up the difference. So you said you want to stop there. Counsel, counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Garcia as it relates to this part? The revenue portion of his presentation this morning.
Bless. This, so in this revenue. Portion that doesn't include the proposed franchise fees that we talked about. Doesn't include the game room.
No, ma'am.
But that's something that we may look at, right?
Correct.
To to make up the three hundred eighty five.
Well, that's whatever suggestions you want to throw our way. I whatever you throw our way today.
I'm throwing it your way.
Right. We we would have to now come back and pass these items by ordinance. For example, at your next meeting, you're going to get a proposal for the contract for waste management, which would allow you to switch commercial. Being built by them and you had a franchise fee. So there, at that point, you have whatever that franchise fee you dictate, whatever percentage you're going to go with.
I know about I know about that procedure. But is there a way to, because this is proposed, right? You know, it's not estimate. Is it a way to put that in in the proposed budget? Or no?
So.
We used to.
Right. So I would tell you that since we're about to do your schedule of fees that we're working on and bring back to you. I would ask that you let us do that to incorporate what all the fee changes are. Because as a council, you may choose to raise certain things, you may want to drop some things. If you remember a couple of years ago, you dropped the rental registration from a hundred to fifty. Right? So you it it could go either way. That's for council. When we bring you the whole schedule of fees, that is your decision to review and make, hey, I want to change this, I want to change that.
But you're not going to put that, I guess my my question is, you're not going to put that in the proposed budget. You don't want, you're just going to keep it the same, what is it?
Well, again, that's 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 your decision to tell me how to do that. However, there is a process of that. If you tell me, hey, I want to raise X, Y, and Z fees. We got to go back, we got to do that, and it's by ordinance, it's two readings, we have to get it passed, whatever the case is, and then a certain amount of days to 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 put into place, whatever that. Whatever that specific ordinance allows.
But but we can put it in the proposed budget to death.
Yes, you could project, you could tell me. Yeah, you could tell me you would think sales tax can hit ten million dollars next year. That's your proposal that you would do. That's your direction. Then it's up to us to bring you a plan that allows that to hopefully be executed.
A microphone. I recognize you, James. You need to need to get to a microphone.
James Osteen, twenty twelve, Joe Donna. On your revenue projections, the EDC. On our revenue, we put the interest in there as revenue and we utilize that in our general budget. I I don't see any interest here anywhere, and I know y'all making some serious interests on your investments. We don't want to just keep adding, you know, you it sounds like you're just leaving the interest in your investments and it keeps building up. But that's money y'all can be using. Use the interest, don't use what your investments are. That's another way to help get this down to thirty nine cents.
Mister uh Mayor, if I can, I have to wait till Ms. Turner gets back. I believe she's accounting for interest as we always have under miscellaneous revenues, but as she stepped away, so if we could allow her to come back so we can answer that.
Okay.
I I wanted, I'd heard this, I don't know where, but um maybe it was another community that was involved in. But um what's it going to go back to policy that's established? In we we need a policy with regard to our reserve days. Uh for example, these cities' reserve days are a hundred and ten. Um we specifically, but we were looking for ninety. And um in some other cities, you take interest as, utilize that to rebuild your reserves. That there's constant contributions to rebuild reserves.
There she is. Ms. Turner, we have a question. Mr. Osteen asked the question. Um whether or not we're using interest from investments as revenue in our. Uh proposed budget, and if so, where would where would the interest, where would those projections be? Under what line item will we find them?
Under each fund, it should have um an interest earnings line item. So we're projecting what our interest will be.
Ms. Turner, could you show where, Kyle, scroll to the left. Could you scroll, show us on this sheet what column that would be listed under?
That would be. More than likely miscellaneous revenues.
Okay, could you confirm that? Please, do you have a moment? Thank you.
Now, sure, within each fund.
Sure, sure.
They they do have an interest earnings line item.
And those those monies, those revenues go into the proposed budget.
Yes.
As revenue.
Yes.
And we expend those out.
Yes.
Mr. Proton, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, it was it was a comment.
Any others?
So whatever you want to make changes here, to whatever changes you propose to make. Um if you could let us know. Uh and then what we'll do is, for example, if you say, I want to raise game room fees from by a hundred dollars each. Then we go back, we put that on our schedule fees, we bring that back to our schedule fees, you vote on it ordinance two times, and then we put that into action. Whatever numbers you would like to make any changes to here. We can proceed however you would like.
Where is uh Ms. Nance? Is she is she due to be here or trying to find a good stopping, a good breaking point? Where's Ms. Nance? Yeah, please. Counsel, uh we are at a natural stopping point for a break. Not a lunch break, but but um more than a ten minute break. Um because the next thing that we probably going to start discussing is this actual revenue. What do we want those revenues to look like? Will it be forty one cent, thirty nine cent? Uh will we uh adjust fees? And from that, uh we will start to move into, um I see police and fire here. Start to move into their requests and get this done. Hopefully by six P M. Have you have you? Contacted her? Counsel, let's uh.
And Mayor, one one last thing, I want, I do want to confirm that real quick before we break. Yes, miscellaneous revenues, that's where the interest on investments is is budgeted.
Go ahead, Joe, did you want?
Is there? Guess, no, they would all be considered restricted funds. I'm thinking of grants. Grants wouldn't be considered general fund revenue. Except, but there are some exceptions then, but it we we just showed them. There would be, there there would be uh a transfer to general fund.
Correct.
That's what we can do cleanup.
Yes, that's part of that.
In there, yeah, okay.
And in an ideal world, every one of your grants will have its own fund. Much longer, so you know exact history of where we were, what we did, how when it got zeroed out, and then what we did to close it. We've been pretty aggressive with grants, so.
Mayor, I do have an answer for where um on about Ms. Nance, it's going to be about twenty minutes. I understand this is a good breaking point, but I just want to give you a heads up, she should be here in about twenty minutes.
Counsel, do we want to take a a fifteen, twenty minute break, thirty minute break now and come back? Or do we want to try to forge ahead and tell Ms. Nance or I?
Why why don't we?
She's she's just bringing refreshment.
I I could do the break now.
All right, well. Don't threaten me with a good time, Joe.
How hard you did last week?
We will, we will take a twenty to thirty minute recess uh to try to regroup. Uh we, when we come back, we'll get into this revenue and into these departments again. Yes, we stand adjourned until about two thirty.
Evening, good afternoon. We're back in our budget workshop, August the 27th, 2024. We are now moving into second half of, second half of our day. Mr. Garcia, you have been tasked with, let's back up, let's, let's allow council to look at, very briefly discuss any of those revenue streams that we went over earlier today. Council, do you have any questions or any ideas? Any thing we'd like to offer about the fund balances and the revenue streams that Mr. Garcia presented us this, earlier this day, today? Mr. Garcia, I wanted to, one of the things that, that we have been turned about is our ability to meet the needs of our community at the current tax rate options or opportunities. One of those needs, and we're about three hundred and, to eighty-five, eighty-six thousand dollars away from your, your recommendation as, as a budget, overall budget expenditure. In that, I believe we have left off an opportunity to augment our police department. One of the, one of the things that I want to bring forward, echoing what I believe Mayor Protim spoke about maybe two weeks ago, was the idea that we can increase revenues to accommodate three to four new police officers through our game room ordinance. I believe Gus counseled us and he shared with us, in order to raise fees for a service or for a permit, rather, for a permit, you have to justify those fees. The reason that I'm, I'm offering along with that, sounds like what Mayor Protim was starting to, to speak about. The reasoning I'm offering as a solution, a, a potentially higher fee for our game room ordinance, for the machines that are inspected, is because to me, that ties directly back to law enforcement. We can justify the fact that we have a higher crime rate with the fact that we also have several game rooms, right? And we can, I believe, justify the need for more patrols because of those game rooms and the potential for higher criminal activity, right? So, so I would say that we would be able, first thoughts, first thoughts, we would be able to at least generate, in my dream, an additional officer per shift, and I believe there are four shifts, is that right? Four? So there are four shifts, right? And I believe we said that, that, the, the price tag on that would be roughly about a hundred thousand dollars per officer. So if we might be able to increase that revenue line item, justifiably so, according to Gus, by three to four hundred thousand dollars, we might be able to, that might be four, and again, council first thoughts, that might be four additional officers to patrol our streets. So that was one of the things that I wanted to offer. Council, we can discuss that, as well as the opportunity that, is it Flores? Or Lopez? Lopez, I'm sorry, I don't know where I got Flores. Miss, Mrs. Lopez indicated that we have an opportunity to realize a franchise fee so that those heavy waste management trucks that, that, that ride our roads on a daily basis, so that we can perhaps earmark those franchise fees to go directly into this street maintenance fund to help repair some of those streets. Again, further, if possible, lowering that general fund expenditure size. Those are just two that, that I'd like to entertain today, to get to where we need to go, to get everything we need out of this budget. I'll step back and let you respond to that, council. Don't be bashful, we're, we're having ideas now. Did you want to add?
Yeah, just one thing on the franchise fee, to be clear, Mayor. We, that's just a, just permitting waste management to undertake that activity is of, in and of itself not sufficient. We have to, as council, decide what we're going to add on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so that's, that's the factor that's.
Add the, the fee.
The fee, the fee itself, what's the, what's the fee that they're going to collect for us and reimburse? But they're going to also handle what we're handling as well.
Very good. Did you want to respond to some of those ideas, Mr.?
I, I, I do, Mayor, and if I can, if I can go into the next layer of presentation, I think it'll answer those questions.
Okay.
Indirectly, but it'll address that, it'll address the, the things for PD, the things for fire, and some of the other things that were requested throughout this budget process.
Before you do that, council, do we have anything else that we wanted to add before he gets into his presentation? Very good, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. During this process, different departments have turned in what was called their packages. What types of things that you wanted to do, that, that they needed to better operate for this next fiscal year. You remember, every department had an opportunity to throw in whatever their package would be. The two that we were focusing on this year were both fire and police, which both combined, if all their packages were to come true, was an amount that exceeded seven million dollars. What we've done is we've tried to tack those items that were on that list, one by one, in every capacity possible. I'm going to need you to just bear with me while we showcase how we can make these things happen in different formats, okay? Kyle, could you please show the Excel spreadsheet, first start with the one that says ARPA? Follow me down to the bottom right, if I'm mistaken. A lot of what the needs, blow that up a little bit, please. And if you can, this is nothing that's brought and brought to you yet, we're just showing you this sheet so you get a chance of what we will propose to help everybody get what they can. We go back and tell what the story is. If you remember, there were a lot of requests that were made for equipment. A year ago or so, when we first made the allocation through ARPA funds, we had not realized the effects of what the increased revenues would be to the water rates, nor did we realize what we had, would, would realize from the increased revenues from Republic. We estimated those numbers, but they were not in the budget because we had already passed the budget when you passed those items. Due to our diligence of where we are, we are expected to be roughly six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars above where we were for, for expenses this year on the utility fund side. Please keep that number in mind.
Say again, how much?
Six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars. If you want to see where that number is reflected, that's also in your binders.
Okay, so let, let's stop so that we can bring everybody with us. Why are we looking at this? We would, we, you, you're, you're showing us ARPA to show, to show what?
The equipment needs, some of the equipment needs that have been requested by both police and fire.
Both police and fire, that's what you're taking?
Yes, sir. I'm doing it that way because it, it's the lowest hanging fruit that allows us to act the quickest to get into things that they've requested. So, why is that of importance? The items that are shown for you in green right now, all those items included, would be the items that we could, and when we first allocated these for ARPA, we did not have funds to pay for these items out of any other format. We had to rely on ARPA because we did not have increased water rates, and we did not have Republic in place yet. These dollar amounts that are up here represent roughly eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, for all these items. But if you only highlight up to the fifteen thousand, it's roughly eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this year, but we're not going to expend all these dollars this year. What are these items? They're the matching funds for ARPA. There are some of the equipment needs that were needed. Those items alone, those are their costs. What we would propose to make this happen, we would need to change our allocation on ARPA. I have to formally bring that back to you, it's got to be an ordinance, it's got to be two readings, but this is what the table would look like if you give me that direction. We can take these funds, reallocate them from the overheads that we have in the utility fund to get Public Works, Streets, excuse me, all the utility side, all their equipment needs that they need, right? That were on that allocated fund, as well as the matching grants that we have for these GLO grants that we have, totaling five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Would you please scroll down? Everything shown on this sheet, this sheet is also available in your binders, it should also be online, is behind tab thirty, when you get to your ARPA decisions, if you want to print out, it should be in your binders. Everything in red is the items that fire has requested. Item number one, the first stretcher, in ARPA, we only allocated thirty thousand dollars. The reality is, is we know that these pieces of equipment cost closer to forty-five thousand dollars each. They requested three stretchers, we only allocated thirty for the first one. So we need to reallocate an additional fifteen thousand to get that first stretcher, and we need to allocate forty-five thousand more for the second stretcher, an additional forty-five thousand for their third stretcher. Another request that was made was air bottles. They requested air bottles and a sequence. Chief Merriman came before you and he said, hey, I need four air bottles in 2024, I need four in 2026, he's planning to replace them every couple of years. In order to not have that burden on the general fund, we're proposing to buy those air bottles in their sequence, because we have to expend the funds by 2026, cut a PO for fourteen thousand, order four now, order four more in 2026. And then we talk about bunker gear. We talked about the fact that chief was trying to get five sets of bunker gear per year in '24 and in '25. This would allow for those to be ordered as such, because they cost roughly five thousand bucks per set. I see chief in the back, if, if I speak wrong on any of these amounts, Chief Merriman, please let me know. Let's scroll down to the sections in blue. These are just some, because it's too many to fit on one screen, we got to roll, I think that's all of them right there. Everything in blue represents the quantities and the items that are being asked for PD. A lot of them are listed on here, what are those items? They requested a total of four canines. They have one, they would need three more. Chief Aragon, if I speak out of turn, please correct. In 2024, which is our current year, Chief Aragon's trying to muster up some dollars to possibly get one canine purchased to have one immediately. That is, you'll see how we're going to pay for the other aspects of that shortly when I show you the tax tables. But in order to get them to their optimal request of four canines, we would need to allocate some dollars for the canines themselves in 2025 and 2026. We have staggered them because we also have to get vehicles for the, retrofitted for these canines, and those are a little bit delayed right now, the vehicles are a little bit delayed to get them in time. So we have to be cognizant of how we would do that. We talked about solar power trailer signs. We have a lot of folks in the community who have requested speeding signs to be put up randomly, moved to a location, location. That's for two signs, they're about seven thousand dollars apiece. PD requested a 3D crime scene scanner, and one of those, ninety thousand dollars. The next item shows one thousand dollars per body worn camera, was the price that I was, was quoted. We put forty-six thousand. Now, notice, they really need fifty, but we could only afford forty-six with this right now. However, if you look to the line to the right, it says that's, they wanted, they requested fifty body worn cameras, of which this plan shows purchase of forty-six. However, we've applied for all of them, all fifty, to come from two different grants that we're currently pending, waiting to hear back from, which we'll know by October, God willing, whether we've been funded or not. to come from two different grants that we're currently pending, waiting to hear back from, which we'll know by October, God willing, whether we've been funded or not. Again, this entire spreadsheet is in your budget books behind tab thirty, if you need to write notes as we go along. Tab thirty.
Is that the one you, you distributed this morning?
It's for the ones that we had binders where we put it in, if not, it might be in the stack that Ms. Casey left for you. It should be with the one with the three sets of colors probably towards the back. As I go on, they also requested to equipping ten CID cards with emergency response lights. That's a cost of four thousand per vehicle at forty thousand dollars.
Hold on just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Hold on just a minute.
That's the sheet right there, that's it right there, yes, that's it, that's it.
But I saw everybody else getting a new binder and I didn't get one.
Everybody brought their binders yesterday and we put it, she's.
Oh, well, why didn't I bring my binder? Thank you.
Can I get this?
He didn't, he didn't turn in his binder.
I didn't turn my binder in either. Yeah, yeah, if you have to get us, I can get us a couple.
Give me one second, I have a question.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, to him. Kyle's bringing us a couple of copies, give me a moment. Do you come out exactly as pretty and colored, who you did with?
I need one. When did y'all turn y'all's binders in? Last night?
Yesterday.
Like at one in the morning? I'm teasing. That's okay, thank you. All right, I'll see you now, see you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, you can, you may proceed, sir.
As we continue, we left off on the ten CID vehicles. They requested, uh, ten CID vehicles, uh, to have emergency response lights. They're four thousand, roughly four thousand dollars each, times ten is forty thousand. They requested, again, we're getting a lot of reports about folks speeding. PD needs to have the radars to do it. So they're about three thousand apiece. They're the LiDAR handheld radar speed detection, uh, machines. They're three thousand each, they requested six, hence eighteen thousand. And you go down, there's a request, a total request was made of fifty handheld radios. We only put five on here. Why do we only put five? Because we've requested already for, 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 uh, they requested fifty, but we applied for forty-five of them already with grants that again, we hope to hear by no later than October about. Hence why we're ready to proceed, if you, once we bring this table and you approve it, by the revised ARPA allocation sheet, we would be able to pu- purchase all these items immediately.
That, that's a no match grant, correct?
That is one of the no match.
The one for handheld?
Yes, that is one of the no match grants that's pending to be here from. The next line item shows in car cameras. They requested twenty-five. We applied to get ten with grants. Twenty-five minus ten is fifteen, hence we put fifteen on this budget. Fifteen times eight thousand, eight hundred is a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Next line item, MCTs. These are, if I mess up the acronym, mobile command terminals, correct? Is that what MCT stands for?
Yes.
Okay. This is essentially what they operate with. They requested twenty-five. We're only able to put in fifteen right now. They cost five thousand four hundred and eighty. Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, we were looking at the possible KO to purchase the other ten. I failed to put that note next to that, I will edit that and put that in there. So that would account for all of their twenty-five that have been requested. Additionally, they requested a total of twenty-five in car radios. Okay, different from in car cameras. At fifteen, they requested ten with grants, it would get to the total of twenty-five. They requested one KBT tool. I see, uh, Lieutenant Rodriguez in the back. I don't want to say what KBT stands for incorrectly, but I believe it to be a SWAT needed piece of equipment to breach. Thank you, thank you. Kinetic breaching tool, thank you. Cost is roughly ten thousand dollars. And last but not least, we were told that they needed seventy-five thousand dollars towards SRT equipment. There's your seventy-five thousand. These are the things that we learned about during this budget process that we're trying to find a way to do. Again, Mayor, you made a great point before, we cannot rely on certain funds, ARPA funds, COVID funds, whatever, because they're one-time funds. But these are also going to eventually, five, ten, fifteen years, depending on the life expectancy of certain pieces of equipment, going to be purchases that we have to maybe do again down the line, but for now, today, to relieve the burden on general funds or any other form of financing, these are the things we can do if you approve, if you tell me, if you give me the direction to bring you a revised ARPA sheet for allocations.
Okay, well, so we've, we've, we've already given you direction last year on ARPA.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then my next thought would be, whatever we have not been able to cover that was earmarked in ARPA, that we haven't been able to move out because of grant awards, needs to stay.
Yes.
Then whatever, whatever would be the remainder of those monies, we can then proceed in a reallocation. Is that what you're asking us to do?
Yes, yes and no. And actually, Mayor, I apologize, because I think you may have stepped out while I made this, this comment. Uh, Kyle, could you scroll up to the green section? And Mayor, and your copy may not show as green, but it's the section in the top.
Okay.
So what we realized, that number up top, that six thirty-seven zero seven six, because of, uh, the direction given by council to take on the Republic con- contract, we have reached an overage in that account that right now, today realizes six hundred and thirty, we're projected, right, we're, we're still, as of month ten numbers, to reach a number of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in surplus.
Which account is this?
That is utility fund. Why that is of importance?
Hold on, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Hold, hold on just a minute, let me, let me catch up to you. So this whole sheet was edits to ARPA allocations, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If this is a sheet that's, uh, proposed edits to ARPA allocations, are you saying that, that, the areas that were in, that are in green up here were originally ARPA allocations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
And so now, to realize, because we can't use utility funds to go buy some of this PD and fire equipment, but we can some of, use those utility funds that we did.
Take care of the utility items?
Yes.
And then allow the six hundred and thirty-seven to be freed up?
Yes.
In ARPA, okay.
Yes, sir. Now, this amount that's shown here in green is more than six thirty-seven. It's actually, if you do the math on going up to the fifteen thousand, we realize it to be eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. But we're also banking on the fact that we're going to have a surplus on next year's budget, which we'll show you when we get to that aspect. We have to still get there, but I just, I just need you all to follow me for this section, so I can get through this section.
Got you.
There. Okay. Now, that is how we plan on getting a good chunk of those supply items. Both fire and PD are in the room here today. I sat with them extensively, asked them to rank their priorities, so I can get everything we needed on there. Of all of their priorities, except for some of the staffing, I think PD asked for like five detectives, I think fire asked, plus some more officers. I think fire asked for, uh, maybe, I, I could be wrong, maybe a dozen bodies, we couldn't even get all the bodies. But equipment wise, these one-time purchases that we can use for these one-time funds, we've allocated for all of them, except for the armored vehicle. We still need more time to do that, and we ask you to consider that when it's time to discuss a increase in revenues possibly.
All of these in blue and red, you're proposing to be covered by this six thirty-seven?
Six thirty-seven plus whatever the difference would be for next year, in next year's utility fund, from those allowable expenses. So six thirty-seven of the eight twenty-five.
Say that, that, that was really fast, say that again.
So the total amount of the red, the white, and the blue adds up to, again, can you scroll real quick and just show me what the sum is? I want to say it's eight hundred and, what's, it's actually, it's, adds up to eight sixty.
Okay.
But everything in the green also adds up to eight sixty. So what we're asking is to reduce ARPA by the eight sixty in green and increase ARPA by the eight sixty in red, white, and blue. How we would pay for the eight sixty? We were proposing to take six hundred and thirty-seven out from this year's overage and the remaining, if I math there, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from next year's overage.
Overage of what?
Utility fund.
Okay.
Caesar, the number's eight fifteen. Is it eight fifteen or eight sixty?
Whatever the, eight sixty, whatever everything in green is. So if I sum those up, I should be at eight sixty.
Under allocated costs.
Uh, yes, ma'am, everything in green should total eight sixty. I add five sixty, seventy-five, one seventy-five, fifteen, and thirty. Or you can just highlight it when they show it up on the bottom right of your screen. Okay. Thank you. So, again, if I could ask you, we do this sometimes, can we just put a pin in that for a moment? Or are there questions in that?
Yeah, there's a question, this five sixty, again, I stepped out for a minute, remove from ARPA and take out of bonds, what, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for what?
The five hundred and sixty are the matching grants for the three GLO grants that you allocated originally out of ARPA. Because when we allocated ARPA, we did not, had, we had not realized the difference of the, uh, slight water rate increases that you had, and we had not realized Republic yet. We were still in a pilot program, and we did not include those projected revenues into the twenty twenty-four budget.
So we're talking about the Republic, okay, the, the, uh, the sludge?
Yes, sir.
You and I had a conversation about validating that sludge operation.
Yes, sir.
Has it been validated?
Thus far, yes. Obviously, with T C Q, we keep getting checked regularly, so it's, it's, it's an every ninety day process, we keep getting checked.
Have you been given any indication that that operation will not be allowed to continue? Any, any indication at all?
Yes, we have, and we've cleared that up.
So?
As of right now, we're clear.
We're clear.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If that changes, I will immediately come to council and let you know.
For clarity purposes, we were supposed to have a report every quarter on that.
I believe in, I don't, sorry, I don't know this to be true, Kyle, if you could double check, I believe they've been posted on the internet, and I'll make sure that we bring those to council on a regular basis, because the reports are actually available monthly. We have to do monthly reporting, and they should have been part of those stats, but I, I will confirm.
When, when you, Caesar, um, how do you, how do you quantify sludge? Is it, what, what sort of, is it, is it tons, is it?
So Rick's not here, so I'm going to do my best to be, um, a temporary sludge expert. Essentially, it is the runoff that comes from the bottom of what would be the.
But how, right, so how do you quantify?
It's in gallons.
In gallons. So you and I had another conversation about, in the same conversation about T C E Q, validating our ability to do this.
Sure.
Make sure that we're able to do this. You also said something about additional opportunities, uh, for revenue.
Yes, sir.
Speak to me a little bit about that.
Certainly. As we were very, very cautious, it took us sixteen months to vet the process with Republic before we did that, because we weren't going to put anybody in jeopardy. Uh, we have started to possibly vet other opportunities to also possibly attain more, more material from other locations. We would not do anything that would jeopardize any of our operations. We're running a much more efficient operation now. We are running a more astute operation when it comes to our wastewater treatment plant. And if we continue to do so and stay within lines of, uh, T C Q with anything that we do, any discharge, whether we have Republic, don't have Republic, have five Republics, whatever we do, we must maintain compliance. We are still, we have not even commenced starting, vetting any additional revenue for any other form.
That's important, right.
Not yet.
So that, and that, that has to come before council.
That would have to.
I want to make sure that we're all clear.
Yes, sir.
Before that even takes place.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we have to bring that up, just like we did with Republic about four or five times to make sure we were ready to go.
So just, just to, to, to fine point this top part, if in fact, T C E Q comes back tomorrow and says, game's over.
Yes, sir.
Right? How are you going to, what would be your next move to recommend to council, to pay for this five hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Certainly. So right now, of the total of, um, Kyle, add up all the numbers except for the thirty-five. I believe it should be eight twenty-five. Out of the eight twenty-five, right, because we're realizing a cost savings of sidewalk repairs, because we've made some sidewalk repairs that could not wait for procurement by reducing that amount, the eight twenty-five that we still need to pay for, essentially, uh, six hundred and thirty-seven of that would be covered now. The other two hundred, if we were not able to take it from the utility fund, and if Texas, excuse me, T C Q came downboard and said, hey, we're stopping tomorrow, we would have to then come back to council and say, council, this is what happened. Here's the situation, we're not able to take sludge anymore, unfortunately, here's what we have. And we'd have to come up with another form of how we pay for the difference, which is roughly a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, if I look at the number correctly.
How is that, if, if you're, and, and again, a question, more, more than, more than a debate. If you're taking five sixty out, and, and that program, and, 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 and you're moving it into the utility fund, and that program generates roughly five to six hundred thousand dollars, right? And that goes away. How then do you meet whatever obligations you have in the utility fund? If you don't have the sludge?
Correct.
Right, how are you doing that?
How would we do this before? Well, in.
I mean, if, if T C Q says no more, you, now you have five hundred and sixty thousand dollars that you have to make up, right?
Correct.
So my, how then are you making that up? Because in order for us to move forward with this, we have to have a plan.
Sure.
Worst case rainy day scenario.
Sure.
How are you doing that?
So Christine's been doing her diligence with some of these outstanding dollars that are out there, with some of these older, uh, bonds or anything else that may be out there. We may have realized enough money to cover that difference of a hundred and eighty-eight to two hundred thousand dollars. I don't have that yet, which is why I haven't formally proposed this to you yet, but we're very close to bringing that forward to you. Once we have that, then we can formally introduce that.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask again. In your sheet, there is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Number one, quantity one, right? It says, remove from ARPA and take out of bonds, R U F.
Or general fund. Or general fund.
It doesn't say our general.
No, utility fund.
It says bonds are, so you're saying you're going to find, or you have already identified, if that, if, if Republic goes away, you have found, and I'm only concerned about that one line item, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Part of that five sixty is in that six thirty-seven.
So that is up, over, and above, I got you now, I got you.
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
Yes.
So that six thirty-seven number has nothing to do with this green.
Correct.
They're just the same color.
They're just happening, I'm, I'm, so I should have made a different color. I was trying to keep it together, yes, sir.
That's okay, I understand.
So the total amount of everything shaded green, except for the sidewalks, add up to eight twenty-five, and we already have an overage of six thirty-seven, so the difference.
I got you now.
Roughly one ninety, give or take.
Okay, I got you now.
Are there any questions on this before we go to the?
Oh, yeah, there, there are definitely questions, which, which, not, not in a, in a challenging way, but in a clarifying way. That sounded bad, didn't it, Kyle? I didn't mean that. So you have added that, uh, seems like PD is adding police cars, right? They're adding, uh, equipping ten CID cars with emergency response lights. Do we have ten CID cars? We do, right now, today. Okay. You have said, Mr. Garcia, um, adding, uh, looked like the PD's requested twenty-five in car cameras. That twenty-five individual in car cameras.
Yes, sir.
Do we have twenty-five cars that need cameras right now, today? We do, okay.
I'll make sure of the timeline.
We, we, we making sure this. We don't want any, any mistakes, we don't, can you imagine G-Rod riding around in his personal vehicle with an in-car? We can't have that G-Rod, we got to make sure we have everything we, so, uh, PD has requested twen- adding twenty-five in car radios, I assume the same, the same, right? Okay, okay, okay. And the handheld radios, PD has requested fifty. There will be at least forty-five sworn officers that are on, they're sworn officers, right? We have no spares. And so this would augment, this would be new radios, and then it would give you all an opportunity to build up a surplus for damages, lost radios, things of that nature. Okay, okay. Did we get the, the, the body cameras? I know we put, we applied for a grant, and we were being awarded here recently. did we get the, the, the body cameras? I know we put, we applied for grant, and we were being awarded here recently awards for PD, right?
Those awards have already been accounted for. The only ones that have not are the ones that show applied for grants.
We got tasers.
We got tasers.
Not body cameras.
Correct. That's why tasers are not on this list. The ones that are on this list showed applied with grants, and on all those grants, we should know by middle of October, God willing.
Okay, okay. Last question is a, this is a fire question. Um, Chief, you ordered, was it last month? You came before us to order bunker gear? Was it last? How much did you, how many did you order? You ordered ten. And so this would be an additional ten?
This would be for an additional ten.
So we would have twenty. How many firefighters? I'm sorry, go ahead, Chief. You might have to come to the podium. I'm sorry.
So we have thirty-four sworn certified firefighters. Um, the ten sets of gear is ten that was, that expired in August. Um, we have some others that expire next year and years after. I'm trying to go five at a time as opposed to come back with, and asking for fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. We're, we're trying to stagger out buying bunker gear, five sets at a time, so we don't have to buy it in bulk.
Okay, okay. So, so you would be, if, if, if council approves this, you would be getting twenty sets, uh, and you would need fourteen more?
I need, I have ten sets this year. So we had some that we bought in fourteen. That's the ten that we replaced. I've got some more that go out in two more years, and I've got some that go out in three more years. So we're trying to start here and buy five, buy five more in the next fiscal year after. So twenty-four, twenty-five, we wanna buy five. Twenty-five, twenty-six, we wanna buy another five. That will get us to the amount of gear that we had, because we already have bought in twenty, we bought fifteen sets.
Okay, so we're, but, but we're, we're talking about twenty sets now?
Five, five out of this coming.
When you came to us, you asked us for how many?
For ten originally that we had to buy.
Did we approve it?
We did.
Okay, so that's ten that you're buying when? You just bought, you just bought.
Out of this current fiscal year.
And then there are ten more here.
Five for this fiscal year, and then five.
Five for next fiscal year, but, but the council may elect to, because of the way that the city manager is proposing it, we may elect to just do ten in one year. That's what it looks like you're doing, right?
Actually, no, I have it spread out, and I apologize. I should have put five in twenty-five and five in twenty-six. That should be.
But why would you, so here's, here's my, my question. This question. If it's ARPA funds, funds that would, are, are you, why are you, are you staggering it on purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
For the, for the expiration dates.
Got you. Never mind, never mind.
It goes back to our predecessors. We bought twenty sets of bunker gear, and if I were to try to buy twenty sets of bunker gear now, I'm trying to break that up. Same way with our air packs and our air bottles. I'm trying to break that up so we can buy them in smaller chunks at a time, make it a little bit more easy for us to cut. It's a whole lot easier for you guys to sit up here and.
So you're not staggering these for money. You're staggering these for timing.
Timing so that it gets our gear out, and I'm staggering it so that it's not as much of a financial burden at one time.
Got you.
It's easier for council to come back and go, yep, we can find you twenty-five thousand dollars for five sets of bunker gear than it is for you guys to sit here and go, I gotta find a hundred thousand dollars to buy twenty sets of bunker gear. It's just a little.
Yeah.
Just trying to spread us out so we're not putting the financial burden all at one time.
Got you. Makes sense. Makes sense. Makes sense. James, did you wanna add?
So we need two sets of bunker gear per fire, firefighter, right?
We do, and I have a grant out for thirty-six right now, hoping to make that the second set of gear.
Okay.
I have a plan. If, if that follows in, then we've got five coming for twenty-five, five coming for twenty-six. We can take three years off and start again with five more sets of gear. And that will keep our, that will keep us in date and keep our, our gear, we'll have cancer caught, we'll, we'll have the cancer initiative of two sets of bunker gear. If we don't, if we don't get awarded the grant, we will try again and come at another, at another angle. Thirty-six sets of bunker gear is a huge chunk of change.
Yeah, I, a hundred percent. I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, I would rather take a year off and start the five rotation again. That way we have it.
My, my job is to tell you all what we need, and y'all's job is to tell me what we can, what we can do.
Yeah. I'd rather, I, I don't ever want us to get to a, a timeframe where our bunker gears going out and we're in desperate need to get some.
Like the ten sets we just bought August.
Exactly. That's, that's, that's my point there. I would.
Luckily, we, our guys, the company we bought from provided us loaner gear until our gear is built. So we are in up-to-date certified gear. Um, nobody's in expired gear. We have loaner gear from the company that's building our gear now.
And that's, and that's the same thing with PD. I don't want us to get to a point where we need fifty again. I'd rather maybe take a year and then get ten, and then get ten. That way we can constantly rotate. Because I, I hate the thought of any one of these guys going without something that, that is shelf life.
Yeah.
You know, that life expectancy on, on equipment like that, we can't, I can't do that to these guys. That's, that's wrong. So.
Yeah.
At least this council, I don't think you'll ever hear from anybody on this council saying, just go out there with your expired gear.
Yeah.
Mayor Potem.
Uh, Ms. Turner, Mr. Garcia, refresh my memory. We, yeah, I'm, we, we, um, we need to have made all allocations of ARPA dollars or our amendments by the end of this year.
Yes, Mayor Potem. We must allocate all funds before December of twenty-four.
And the fund itself, all the expenditures need to be completed by the year twenty-six.
December of twenty twenty-six.
December of twenty twenty-six, where it has to be made and it's basically zeroed out at that point. Okay, that's what I just wanted to confirm.
And also, just to, something in between, there's three steps. There's allocation, procurement, then expensing. Allocation, you've already done, which I'm asking you to redo to update, if, if, if you so choose. Procurement is a second set that must also be done before the end of this calendar year. Then you have two years to expend it. Why? If you do a construction project and it takes you two years to finish it, that's why they staggered it that way because they know it takes time to do that stuff.
That's important, that, what, what you said, because now that's, that's a lot of work on the council, right, to, to, uh, allocate and to expend.
And, and. Allocate and procure.
Procure.
Which you've got, I know Chief's got a couple IFBs and RFPs coming. Christine's got hers coming up this next meeting for the finance software. Chief has got some. We're meeting tomorrow with Grant Works. We've got, you're gonna have a meeting which is gonna be flooded with stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we've been working on this for almost weekly for about six months to get it to the point where we are.
That, that should be a, a, definitely a well-publicized meeting.
Yes.
Um, may, maybe even a meeting separate and apart from a regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
So that we can spend the adequate amount of time on it, so that, again, like we're doing now, slowing down, making sure that we're breaking this down in layman's terms to help people, bring people along. So that's probably gonna be one of those types of meetings.
Yes, sir.
Any, if there are no further questions, council, on just this sheet, we'll allow Mr. Garcia to proceed to the next thought.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jim.
When, when it's appropriate, and you just let me know. Or feedback is to all of, feedback on all this plan. That's all.
Do you wanna, you wanna jump in now? You wanna wait till he's?
I, I don't know unless everything he has to say.
All right. Proceed to the next thought, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. The sheet that's coming to you next, I'm gonna hand out your printouts. Forty-one. The sheets that are shown, I want you to focus on only the left side of the sheet. You can, yeah, make it a little bit smaller, but just scoot it to the right if you can. All right. Each one of you will get a stack. They're already hole punched. When he gets a stack.
Thank you.
I will ask you just one thing. The sheet that's in front of you that's on top says thirty-nine sets. Please flip the sheet to where forty-one cents is the one that you're looking at first. We're gonna get to the thirty-nine cent one. I just copied and added four. Just put the one that says forty-one is the one on top, because that's the one that's on the street. It's the problem. All right.
What we've done with these three sheets, if we've added, we've listened to everybody's request, we know that we're getting street equipment, so we need people to help operate it. We know that we're trying to take over a pilot program of the mowing contract, so we can try to reduce that burden. We know that fire needed engineers for, for their staffing levels. We know PD needed officers and, and a few other things. We have added everything else that was requested, as well as some of the other things that were needed on some of these wish lists. All three of these plans show basically the same exact items. The only things that change with the rate, with, with whatever rate you ended up going with, if this is the plan, if these, any of these plans or any mixture of these plans you wanna go with, is not what these teams will receive, but when they will receive them. I'll show you that example. If you're looking at the forty-one cent sheet in front of you, we'll go from the top to the bottom on the column to the left that says item. At the forty-one cent rate, it allows for a two and a half percent cola for all non-CBA staff. Okay, that's everybody in fire or, or non-CBA general fund staff, excuse me. I wanna be clear. It calls for the salary adjustments that were part of your packages. It calls for an event stipend because we requested a, uh, event person to try to help with events and programs. We know that we probably can't realize that this fiscal year. I think Mayor, I think it was you that made us suggest that possibly doing some stipends from, from, from the DIAS. We've incorporated that. It was brought up to include possibly a budget coordinator, an equipment operator and maintenance worker for streets, a, uh, maintenance worker to help out with parks with some of the mowing. Scroll down. Thank you. Three engineers for fire. Lexapole, which they need to make sure they can meet their standards. There you'll see the addition of the first canines, boarding, vets and food. There you'll see the canine's handler stipend. They also made their number one request that was made was to upgrade their evidence clerk to full-time. They're working on accreditation. We, we know, we've been on the tours. We know that that evidence room's gotta get cleaned up. There you have four police officers, and when they'd be able to start. There's a conversion of a corporal rank to keep their troops in order when it comes to the shifts. We even threw in, he, uh, Chief Aragon requested a GIS mapping person. We figured that we could possibly do that with just paying for our current GIS program that we're working on. Just pay a consultant to do that works. We'd have to have a full-time employee doing that. They requested five or six, correct if I'm wrong, uh, investigators. The number one priority out of all those was cold case. That's also been included. And then we talked about having jailers. The jailers cost would have cost sixty-one thousand dollars per jailer times four. We're looking at a rate of roughly two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. One idea that I challenged PD with is to see if they, is there any way possible that we could do a pilot program, where we can have our telecommunicators, which we now are fully staffed, have two per shift, have one of those per shift be jailer certified, that they could do some of those duties of checking on the jail every hour on the hour while they're on the shift, should prisoners be there? We multiply that by twelve-hour shifts, two shifts a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and that is how we plan to attack that request that they have made. PD will look into that matter, and that's why that's listed as such. Again, we're checking off items off the checklist that they requested. Now, if you look at the date that is shown in column D, or the date, it's labeled D on the screen, but it's labeled date on your sheets, it shows when they would get these items. So those are the dates of when they would get them. The forty-one cent rate does not allow them to get any more, except for that GIS, and I'll get to that in a second. It's still the same items. It's just they get them a little bit sooner. Why was that possible? Kyle, scroll up to the top. Scroll all the way to the right. To the right. If you remember, on the table, keep going, all the way. If you would have chosen, if you look at your sheet up top, that's number that shows if you went forty-one cents, because we went down to zero base budgeting, that is the surplus that you would have as the zero base budgeting at our current proposed budget at forty-one cents.
One ninety-five.
The one million, one hundred thousand dollars, one million, one hundred seventy-two. That number that's highlighted in green, that's also on your sheets in green, that top number. Now, we're gonna get back to the other ones in a second, but I want you to know where these allocations came from. So if you notice what's on there, we took the item being requested, when we projected to start that item, what would be the cost of that item, by the percentage applied, and that's how we came up with those numbers. If the item requested is starting in October, they're being applied at a hundred percent capacity, which now puts the total amount where it is. If it's twenty-five, like the budget coordinator was twenty-five percent of the year, we took the unit cost. That's the salary, that's the fringe, that's the TMRS, that's insurance, that's the whole, that's the cost of having that body, of every one of those bodies, right? That, those are the cost. But it's at a low, if you notice the applied amount, it goes down because it's a certain percentage of the year because the position would start in January instead of October, three months later. So one-fourth of the way through the year. So what this sheet represents, go all the way to the right again, Kyle, please. I appreciate you being the man of white up here, by the way. Just scroll all the way down to the bottom. If you were to approve this rate, if you approve this rate, and you approve those allocations as we recommended, which checks off all the PD boxes to our best of our ability, all the fire boxes to the best of our ability with this rate, you'd have a surplus in your total budget of roughly a hundred and ninety-five dollars. So you have a twenty million dollar budget, you have a surplus of a hundred and ninety-five dollars, ninety-seven cents in a perfect world. Okay? I got everybody so far? Okay. Scroll down to the bottom left, though. I want everybody to understand that this is a very, very big component. This spot that's right here, this table, you can do that one more time, child. Just make it a little bit smaller, so we can get the whole, that table. There you go. This table shows, because some of the items, you're not starting them at the beginning of the year. In twenty twenty-five, the numbers up top of the table show what they cost for just twenty twenty-five. But you have to understand, if I don't start somebody on October first, and I start them six months into the year, in twenty twenty-five, I'll pay for only fifty percent of their salary. But in twenty twenty-six, I have to pay for one hundred percent of their salary. Does that make sense, everybody? That being said, that number of two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars is what you will start twenty twenty-six already, two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars behind, because you presumably would keep these people for the entire year. You can't tell the canine officer, you know what? We'll need to nine months this year. You know, you, you, there's certain things you can't do, right? So this is the difference. We, we have never done this before. We've never planned ahead like this. This tells you now what the effects of your decisions this year for twenty-five, how they will affect you in twenty twenty-six if you don't fund them starting October one. We had to change the dates to get everything everybody wanted within this timeframe. So this is the effect of your decisions. If you choose this route, what the, the, the effects decision will be on the twenty-six budget. We're already a year ahead. We've already started working on the twenty-six budget, and we haven't even passed twenty-five. Okay? That's the forty-one cent rate. Kyle, can you please show us the forty cent rate? The forty cent rate allows all of the same things on here. The only difference is it does not show that GIS contractor. Kyle, you can actually, if you want, for visibility reasons, you can actually hide column C, because all it shows is the formula that we used. But if anybody wants to see that, we can always put that back up. That's just how I calculated a whole versus a part. Every month counts for eight point three 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 percent of the budget, right? So three months is twenty-five percent. Add to a fourth month, you add eight point three three to it, gets to forty-one point six seven, and so on and so forth. Okay? So what changes here? All every, all the items are the same. Scroll all the way to the right there. You see that number up there which says nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars? That's what your surplus would be at a forty cent rate. If you allocate these items as such, scroll all the way down, you're left with a surplus of three oh. You're left with a surplus of three oh nine fifty five. Let's blow up the forty one cent table, please, there. This is the difference of the forty percent forty cent proposal versus the forty one cent proposal. If you choose this plan. Your cola's dropped from two and a half to two. Your streets uh equipment operator, instead of starting in 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 January, January first, now has to start April first. If the fire engineers, instead of charge starting on November first, you have to start on February first. So three months later. Everything has a later start date. The only two that don't, if you notice on here, and it's just because of the way the math worked out, your canine actually gained a month, and they got here a month earlier. And your corporate rank started uh looks like two months earlier. That's why those numbers are shown as a negative number. This is the additional effect that having this plan. Versus the previous plan. Puts the burden on the twenty twenty six budget. So the one fifty seven. Added to the two thirty two is the effect that you're starting twenty twenty six by. Now, let's go to the thirty nine cent. Kyle, scroll to the top, please. Now your surplus for thirty nine cents, which has been the same amount. For all of them, all the way through. Is now seven fourteen nine eighty. Notice the difference is still by that hundred eighty eight to two hundred thousand dollars that we showed when we started the meeting. Right? Now at thirty nine cents, your proposed surplus at a at a zero budget is seven fourteen. What this table shows an allocation of that seven fourteen, still hitting the same items that are being requested. Except that your staff is starting later. It still gets you the same bodies that you requested. It just gets them here later. You're not making a choice between you get an officer or you don't. You're making a choice whether you get them sooner versus later. Please scroll down, Kyle. If you choose this plan, the difference is one thousand six hundred twenty dollars and eight cents left over. And the bottom of the table shows two tables. The difference from getting this plan to the forty one cent plan. Or the difference of what this means from the forty percent plan. So if you want canine tier sooner, we got to figure that out. But if you're willing to wait, we can make all this happen. Just look at the additional burden that comes upon us on these rates.
Sees, I I have no idea, and I know I've been answering the phone, and it's been a busy day, but I have no idea what you're talking about with the added effects. I I you lost.
Okay, sorry. I apologize. Let me go back. Go scroll up, please, Kyle. So. Uh let's pick on engineers. Engineers are easy. Engineer is a good one. Engineers on the thirty nine cent plan, according to these proposals. At the thirty nine cent plan that's shown at the surplus of seven fourteen, there's the cost, if you would have had him all year, starting October first, was three thirty eight, two fifty seven for the engineers. However. The because of this plan, we had to get the numbers where it kind of made sense to still get everybody what they needed. They are now starting March first under this plan. Okay?
So what you're trying to say is. In twenty five, twenty six, they will be on the books for an entire year.
No, sir.
Twenty five, twenty six. Twenty five, twenty six.
No. In twenty five, twenty six, they'll only be on the books for March first on. I'm sorry. You're right, Mayor. Sorry. I apologize. You're you're with, I'm with you. I'm with you.
And because of that.
So I'm sorry.
And because of that, you're saying. Because we did half a year, a quarter of a year. Now twenty five, twenty six is a full year, and it will be added expenses.
Yes, sir. That's what I was. I was, I was, we're already working on the twenty six budget.
I got you.
We're already a year ahead. We know that there's going to be an additional burden because you would assume that you would want all these additional things to be on for the entire year.
Got you.
So instead of starting next year's budget. It's starting to start a million. One point one for these people instead of seven hundred and fourteen thousand.
And in essence, so so all we're doing with that is. Basically, either we're eating that cost now, or we can wait a year. And get our numbers to make sure our numbers are concrete. Great work, Ms. Turner. Great work, Ms. Garcia. And working toward that, I'm not saying that. You know, we're not there, but we are, we're not there, right? A year's worth of uh budget work, finance work, accounting work. Uh the people seeing all of these uh these actions and activities taking place, a year's worth of week uh monthly. Financial reports, balance sheets, right? Building the the constituents. Confidence back in the numbers and the routine uh numbers. Uh the 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 routine disseminating of those numbers. Uh I don't think that personally we would have a problem. I think that we would have a problem if we try to front load this. Right? So a year to prove out this new uh uh finance team. And and Ms. Turner's leadership. Might bring three hundred and thirty three thousand and three dollars and eight cents worth of confidence, right? Got you.
But what whatever whatever your will is right now.
Got you.
What we attempted to do with these sheets was to bring you a plan to get to as many of the requests that were made by fire and PD. At any one of the rates, whatever rates you choose.
Yeah.
You asked for three options of rates. We gave you what you can get with the three rates. And essentially you can get almost, except for that GIS uh person, I think that we had, almost all the same items. It's just a matter of when in the year you would get them. And regardless of when you do them, there is going to be a burden if you select them, if you if you choose them, there would be a burden in the following year anyways. It's just depending on what, how much of a burden you would you would want to take, really.
Yeah, I I understand where you're coming from now.
So so we. Once we do the budget, we can come back and do a budget adjustment. For the franchise fees, game room fees to get the GIS.
Yes, well, the GIS, what we looked at doing, instead of having a full time staff member. Uh we have asked our our engineer who's working with bringing GIS to the city. You guys gave us authority to launch that project about six months ago, if I'm not mistaken. Um about seeing if they could help us with that. And the main reason for the GIS for PD was to be able to track a district by district way that the crimes are occurring. So that we could do that a little bit better, more more faster, you know, a little bit more real time.
So that but that may be a way to get that with the with the added fees.
Correct. And either way, regardless, even if I had a full time person, if I don't have GIS in place, I I can't get you the the result anyways.
Right.
So this actually will hopefully make it faster.
Okay.
And will allow staff in house to possibly help with that assistance to to better track them in districts.
So so none of this, Caesar, none of these projections that you've made, this 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 presentation that you've made. None of this takes into consideration. The idea that Mayor Portem has advanced and that I've picked up and piggybacked on. This game room ordinance adjustment. That is major.
That is correct, Mayor.
When you're talking about eighty nine or ninety thousand dollars per officer, one, two, three, four officers. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that potentially, if council were to act on that, that will potentially free up another three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Potentially. And and we did the math on that. I think you guys proposed five hundred dollar increase. Uh I I was talking to somebody in a break. How many machines do we have? Five hundred and. So if you take five seventy times five hundred, that's your amount roughly. Less than three hundred thousand.
Okay.
So but Mayor, to your point. These amounts that are on here don't show any potential increases because you haven't made any potential increases yet. This went by the numbers that we have at the time. Right now, y'all may change your mind. Remember, if you remember, I think it was a year or two years ago, we had a discourse where we dropped our our rental revenue, our our um. Help me out here. The rental registration.
Yeah.
That was a move maybe in a different direction, but still, it's a change that was made. So we need to be ready for whatever that happens. These numbers are before you on what you have now. The beauty of it is is if you raise any of your rates. Your surplus number will only go up based on the zero base budget that we have. So you'll have more to allocate. You can come back and do a budget amendment. So if it's to get an additional officer, if it's to get additional firefighter, if it's to get the armored vehicle, whatever it may be. By the way, the armored vehicle is not shown in any of these plans. Could not fit it in. But but. The lead time on it is twelve to eighteen months, correct? Twelve to eighteen months. So if perhaps if we raise some rates, whatever rates you choose. If you bring that back and you do a budget amendment at that time, perhaps at that time, you may be able to order that. Or get an officer or two or whatever you may choose.
The equipment. Or we can add to our fund balance, Councilwoman Yancy.
Whatever you choose.
The equipment replace, I I'd like to know uh. Here's an here's another thing. So we have five hundred and some odd thousand dollars in the equipment replacement fund, right?
Yes, sir.
What is the thought? If any. At using some of those monies? Equipment replacement. What? Where are we with our public works equipment? Uh and could we then perhaps use that for some of our other equipment?
So we're not done doing the full research, but it looks like those dollars were set aside. Remember the 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 ambulance remount for ambulance uh remounts two and three? That's looks like maybe two to three of those remounts. We've realized that now through some of the research we've done, looking through Susie's notes.
Council had already allocated.
You'd allocated funds. We couldn't find where they were. That's our best estimate today. Can I say that without a shadow of a doubt? No, but that's what it's looking like.
Will that take over the up the whole five hundred K? And if so, did we allocate any more monies in other places in the budget to accommodate? That those remounts.
Right now, you have a total of four remounts necessary. We've paid for one. Two and three were set to come out of that fund. Number four is set to come out of ARPA.
Okay, okay.
But. Without procuring it, I can't tell you an exact number. But that's what it looks like it was because Chief Mayorman, if I'm sorry to interrupt you all in the back. The original amount for remount was about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars when you first quoted it out way back when, correct? Couple of years back?
One seventy eight.
So the numbers have fluctuated. Hence why maybe, and again, I can't say, I can't say, I don't know. Maybe that's why those amounts were allocated that way. And that's maybe where that came from, because that's the only note that we found so far as to what the allocation of those funds would have been intended for. And that's part of the research that we're doing. We're very hopeful and we're very confident we'll be able to get two of those remounts out of those funds once we properly procure them. And we'll bring those to you for approval.
Mayor, if I may. I I want to back up. The majority of the citizens last night, they came and they spoke. The majority said thirty nine cents. They wanted their taxes kept the same. They didn't want a tax increase. The citizens, the two things that were critical to them. The citizens said infrastructure and police. That that should be our focus here, not not giving them something six months, eight months, twelve months. It should be now, especially when we got to order something. Here's the other thing. The liability, if we don't get them something now, they've requested it. If we deny them something that's going to keep them safe. The city's got a problem on their hands. Yeah, and 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 Mr. Mayor Protem can tell you that as a lawyer, they've requested it. So if we deny it, and and God forbid, something happens to one of our officers. Breaching a home, entering a home, approaching a home, we're in trouble. We're in big trouble. Yeah, they're serving between a hundred and two hundred warrants a year. Is it worth three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give them some safety? I i is it worth it? I I think it is. They need the armored vehicle. They've got it twelve to eighteen month wait on that. That we need to get it. That's that. We got to get it. We got to get them the tools that they need. It it's a liability now. It becomes a liability for us. As a city and as elected officials, they requested it. If they denied it, if we deny it. We've got an issue. God forbid something happened to any of them. We got high crime here. The this camera right here last night, if you guys want to look at the uh. Look at the camera at at the crowd. These people are getting brazen. There there was gang members in here throwing up gang signs last night. Okay, they're getting brazen in this community. So again, let's give the officers what they need. The citizens told us, they already said thirty nine cents. That's that's what they wanted. They told us police. What areas? Have you cut or been willing to cut to give the citizens what they ask for? As a business owner, in the last three years, I've lost five pieces of equipment that I had to sell to maintain my business. It sucks. It's horrible. It's like starting over. It's bad. But it's necessary to keep going. Sometimes you got to make tough decisions, and and if we have to make a cut in the department, that's what we do. They we've kicked the can down the road for twenty six years with this department. They need the tools that they're asking for. They got to have it. The the money's there. I I'm asking you, the money's there. We know the money's there. I'm asking you to 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 give, give it, get get it to them, whether it's. Cutting twenty people out of public works if we got sixty or whatever whatever we got to do a as a council and as a city manager. Let's get it done. Let's give them the tools that they need. We got to do it. I I keep saying it. I'm going to keep over and over. Listen to taxpayers, thirty nine cents. They said it. They said it, so.
Councilman Laurie, may I?
Let let's let before you do that, uh uh Mr. Garcia, one of the things we have to remember, council. And this is this is our first budget workshop together. We're going to have to make those recommendations, Councilmember Laurie. We're going to have to do the due diligence of going through that budget and saying, hey. This we can pull this out and put that in. That's part of our due diligence that we got to. We got to work together on. Uh to get to that, to get to to those places that we're trying to go. Did you want to respond?
I I I do want to respond. Um and Councilman Laurie, public, council members, mayor, everybody. This is just a proposal based on the feedback that I've gotten from the entire budget process. Everything that's added on here is based on needs from a lot of folks. This sheet, as you know, was done before last night. I could not have recreated this sheet. Right? This sheet was already done, okay? So this sheet was based on everything we've gone through the last two weeks, a collective environment of trying to do the best that I could to sprinkle as much as possible. And as you can tell. From this these sheets that are in front of you and the ARP allocation and everything else that we're proposing. A good majority of the effort was put towards public safety. We get that. Understood. There's a lot of needs that went unmet. Kyle asked for another body. Sorry, Kyle. Next year, maybe next year will be your year.
Twenty six years, maybe.
Well, listen, twenty six years, I haven't been here for twenty six, but I can tell you from Byron PD. Point clear as day, they probably got more support in the last three years under this this administration and this council than they probably have ever got. I can't speak for before because I wasn't here before. But they're here. You can ask them all. They've probably got more. Do they deserve more? A hundred and thirty percent. I don't doubt that. This plan or these series of plans, we're trying to take, all right, where are we at with tax rates? I got to be my council options. I got to bring choices for them to make. You guys make those choices. You guys drive that bus. All we got to do is put gas in the bus, make sure the tires are aired up, and then you guys guide us. That's what this was an attempt to do. And yes, look. I I don't have fifteen, twenty years of experience doing this, but I got two ears and one mouth, and I listen to what they're telling me. And I've listened to what they've said, and I've listened to the taxpayers, and I pay taxes here as well. So I get it. I'm all for it. Personally, a thirty nine cent rate, woo hoo, let's let's do it. Let's let's add exceptions with with which which Councilman Ross and, you know. Uh Mayor Protem coming up said for years, we got to work our way there. It takes three years to recover from a rollback. We're still in year two, and we're adding things. We're adding bodies. We're adding equipment. We're being as frugal as we can. If you look at the operating budget.
Running revenue too.
Of course we are, but we're blessed. And you know why that's from? Because of everybody that sat up here on this dais before, during and after, has put in an effort to make those decisions that has gotten us here. It it's it's not the Lamarck of yesteryears. Right now, you you saw the list of packages. It was well over eight million dollars if everybody's packages were included. We don't have eight million dollars. This is the way to set the set the course. We're, as you notice, we're already planning on twenty six's budget. So whatever council's will is going to be, Mayor, the direction that you give us, that's what we're willing to take. If you want to make cuts and changes, please do so.
I think that's what we need to work towards.
What what whatever the will, we have the votes, you have the votes to do it. Give us a direction, we'll go.
Yeah.
And and Mayor, you said that. You've said it since your first election, you wanted to have the safest city. In order to do that, they have to have the equipment to do it. And 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 safety is.
Sure.
We're we're at risk now. As we're at risk now, if we don't, I mean, it's a liability for us now.
But we could still order the armored vehicle and not pay for it till it gets here. Counselor just has to give that direction, and you still get it. We don't have to pay for it for eighteen months if that's the case, or whenever it gets delivered, correct me if I'm wrong. We've got to cut a PO today. We'll have to cut it based on our reserves or whatever part of the budget we haven't done yet, and we can work with finance if you give us that direction. If that's the direction that council wants to go in, Mayor, Council, Councilman Laurie, all of you, we'll do it. Just tell us, this is a plan without that included because mathematically I couldn't fit it in. Just tell us, this is a plan without that included because mathematically I couldn't fit it in. All right, but if you want to change it, whatever your will, just let us know so we can do it.
So basically, we what we what we're doing here, for example, just so they were all on the same page. I believe Mayor Protem and Mr. Ross floated the idea of. Raising the exemption level. Right? Those are ideas. Now, we can agree, disagree, think they're great ideas, think that they're, we can do better. But that's part of their proposal. I've said, let's look at game room ordinance is to get these officers on the street. There's a direct tie there. Mr. Laurie, you're saying that you want to make sure that we are maximizing our safe city initiative, that we are. Empowering our officers with equipment, manpower, training, the whole works. So what we gotta do then is we it's. Mr. Garcia has made a recommendation. Now it's up to the council to do the hard work. If there are cuts available, the council has to start saying, well, I think that we should cut this or that. And then we move toward that that place, right? So that's the work that we have to do now. You've done your work. We have to do ours, right? So that's where we are. Go ahead.
So in the event that there that we do raise fees and stuff for the gamer, that that wouldn't go into effect till twenty twenty five, correct? So we vote on it now, but it would.
It will go into effect in October.
Oh, it's going to, okay.
October. If we if we vote to raise, I'm sorry, I don't want to misspeak. So what are you trying to say before I finish?
Oh, no, finish yours and then I'll.
I think what he's asking is, will it go in twenty five? We can project it in this budget. We can do the schedule of fees increase and have it. Be implemented sooner than that is all I'm trying to say.
Yes, so the schedule of fees would be is going to be a completely separate ordinance. It wouldn't be done during this process. It'll be something separate, but in that ordinance, you guys can set a start date or it would start thirty days after.
So the answer is we can do it in in this next fiscal year, yes, twenty four, twenty five.
Depending on if it passes the ordinance in sequence, we do first reading September, second reading in October, and you said you wanted to start. Thirty days after it passes, you're talking about mid-November, or if you want to say December first, whatever date you you designate.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mayor, I just want to clarify.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Every every bit of clarity we can get is good. Ms. Nancy is saying to to Councilmember Laurie. Automatically, if we pass an ordinance, there's a thirty day wait period unless council specifically gives a date. Is all you were saying then, okay?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes. Chief Mayorman?
Aaron Council on that game room ordinance, if you guys pass it for the new rate. Game room permits. Start over January one. Which means they have to start paying their permit fees in December. They come into my office, they pay their permit fees, they get their background checked by my fire marshal's office. A fire inspection is done, a code enforcement inspection is done, and the new stickers are placed by January or February. If you guys want to up the rate. Then it has to be done quickly so that they will see that new rate increase. By December, January of this year, otherwise it will be the following December or January. That the new rate increase would come into effect.
Okay, thank you for that, chief.
Chief, before you. Run away. Cause we talked about rental registration stuff. How are we? How is permitting coming or code coming along with? Hunting down our rental registration people?
The number is growing, but again, we still don't know what we don't know.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. I was just letting you know I had a question after him. Finish.
So we. Every day we we find more, but you know, it's it's one of those things that we don't know. We don't know who else is renting until we till we almost stumble across. Now, the the big ones. The subdivisions over in the rental subdivisions over in Painted Meadows and. And obviously all of the big ones, we we know about those. It's the the other ones, the. The Avenue Bs that we're working on increasing all those, but we have, we have seen the, I believe, a slight increase this year in the number. But I still don't think we're at a hundred percent. And I don't, I don't know what number we're at because.
We don't know what it is yet.
Yeah. I think there's there's a a question from Councilmember Blair, correct me if I'm wrong, and this this relates to you and the and the police department. Maybe shed some light. When you are onboarding those those specialized positions. It's it's different than onboarding a. A laborer in the public works department. There there are processes that take weeks, if not months, for you all to successfully onboard people, right?
Yes.
And. Police officers and firefighters are, especially in today's. In in today's climate, few and far between. This proposed budget. Has at least four to five police officers in some capacity. And at least three firefighters, right? So to educate us, I'm a little more familiar because I come from public safety, but. These gentlemen, Miss Yancy may not. What? How long of a process, Chief Wagner, Chief Mayorman? How long of a process does it take months wise to onboard successfully three to five? Police officers, firefighters, so that we can get context? One of his concerns is, we want to give it to you now, right? So that you can use it now. But I guess answer for us, how quickly would you be able to use it? If you're working as efficiently as possible to onboard these people? And then Chief Wagner, if you would respond to that.
So. So for the police department, their background check and. And onboarding process is considerably more extensive because they have to physically make contact with all of the employers, previous employers. Our background is still pretty extensive. We do a background, we contact employers, we do. We do the same kind of process. It's not as extensive as the T-hole required background. And when we say, you know. For them, they're going to have to hire new fresh officers right off the street, so that's probably going to take them a little longer. As far as hiring three engineers, I'm not going to go out and hire. Three. Engineers, because that's a promoted position within the fire department. You start out as a firefighter. Your first level would be an engineer or the driver of the truck. You're promoted to that position. So what would happen for us right off the bat is we would promote three of our firefighters to engineers. Then we would backfill those positions with firefighters. There's where the process is going to come in. We're going to have to post a position. We collect, you know, X amount of candidates and depending on how fast those candidates come in. I will tell you that process is becoming sped up because. People want to work for the Lamarck Fire Department as well as the Lamarck Police Department. We have, we've just recently hired an out of state candidate. Probably the first time in the history of the Lamarck Fire Department that anybody from. Another state has wanted to transfer into Texas to work for the Lamarck Fire Department. Which made us fully staffed. So we would have to promote three engineers and then we would go out and look.
What's that look like months wise?
To onboard three firefighters. I'm looking at. Six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks.
Two months.
Two months. Chief, did you want to help?
But for the first couple, after that, it's probably about, I'd say, two months.
Okay. Two to three months, so both look roughly the same, end of the year type of a, so the first part of the of the year. You may not even be ready. To have them. You can start the process, but as far as them. Rolling onto the payroll, probably not going to happen in the first quarter.
I'd say about half of them, right? Because half of them.
Half of your people.
A couple that are ready to go to the academy, they've already been. They wouldn't start a day.
Well, hold on a minute, chief, on that. A couple of them that are ready to go to the academy. Did you just say that? So that means that. They would be getting paid a lower rate, right, than what we have here? It's already factored in, okay? Okay, okay, okay. Got you.
So with the with the training for the fire. So they they move up the engineers and the firefighters, six to eight weeks, can you do all, like, train all three people or four people at the same time?
We we so our our shift matrix is three shifts. That's why we always go in threes because we put one on each shift. So each captain would get a new firefighter to train. As opposed to one captain getting three firefighters to train. We try to try to make it pretty even so each captain. Each shift gets a new firefighter for the shift to run through their taskbooks and. Once they're onboard, the taskbooks that they have to go through for basically their training officer period. It takes them about two months to get through that as a, before their probationary taskbook is completed.
Thank you.
Caesar, you are complete. You finished with your presentation?
Yes, Mayor, until we get to the utility side, I'm finished for now.
So let's, ladies and gentlemen, we certainly have to get to a place that we can. Have some sort of a decision on which direction we would like to go in. The proposed rate was set, I believe, at forty one cents last week. Is that right, Kier? We can go down, we can't go up. Mr. Garcia has prepared three different levels. Participation for us and for our community. I think it's time to really drill down on a a workable tax rate. I am. It sounds like we heard from Mr. Laurie already. He's he is at thirty nine cent. Is that safe to say? At least thirty nine cent? We're just discussing, yeah, we're just discussing which one of these based on the budget. That we want to settle on and then we'll we'll follow after that. Sounds like Mr. Laurie, sound like you're at least a thirty nine cent person.
Yes, sir.
I am still remaining at thirty nine cent. I believe that Mr. Garcia, your administration has proven. That you can, you can reach the majority of of those areas of need. With thirty nine cent, in addition to some of the things that we just suggested. So I am a person who is supporting thirty nine cent with an increase in our game room ordinance fees. As well as the creation of a. Franchise fee for our commercial waste management contracts. Those are the two things that I'm uplifting with the thirty nine cent plan. And I am supporting at this time, the thirty nine cent plan, which. Three point, three point three nine, excuse me, eight five zero one. And this plan generates, raises no new taxes. Any others?
I just want to, so an APC is eighteen months out, right? Twelve to eighteen. It's been. Little over decades since I've driven anything that's been armored and. It may be different than what the Marines made me have to do to to drive a couple of them. What's the qualification to be able to, can't just hop in and and take off and drive in one? Or at least the ones that I'm used to, so.
And if we says it doesn't have air brakes, you don't require a CDL.
Microphone. Don't be bashful, G Rod.
So since they don't have air brakes, technically you're not required to have a CDL. Now, I want to say it's TML, but don't quote me on it, does offer a APC course that our officers be able to attend to. Get certified.
How long would that take during during our our process to buy this thing? How? Cause I don't want to buy a piece of equipment and let it stay.
Right, right.
So I'm and I'm not definitely not stopping you all from getting one because, hell, I'd. Love to be sitting in front of one dressed as Santa Claus in a blue outfit one day. I mean, that's just me personally. But. I I mean, I don't. Done it with the. Mosquito truck. I don't want to see it happen again.
Yeah, he's got people qualified right away.
Roger that. That's the answer I needed to hear.
So some of the people, one of the people, he's actually in the back, we took him from Texas City and he used to be their SWAT commander. So he is already well versed in. Everything.
Great. Further, TML does offer the course and and since it is a specialized course, we would have to ask upon them to offer us that training course, but it is a doable thing with enough time.
Great, great questions, Mr. Ross, and I like the Santa Claus idea. Are there any other benefits that? To the to the armored vehicle besides like hostage rescue, obviously the safety, being able to deploy the officers. In a safe manner, are there any other benefits that that you could tell council that would? Possibly help change their mind on?
So the the package that we, I believe you'll have the quote in front of you, all the packages on there. It does have a high water boarding package on there so that it does enable us to use it for high water rescue. It's also like a, it's a larger wheelbase, which means that we could put more people in there potentially for this this high water rescue. It's also got a four by four package, which enables us to use it in other neighboring communities such as like. You know, Hitchcock or more rural communities that they might need something like that. So I tried to make it as as. Universal as possible, so it's not just used for tactical stuff. It's it can be used for, you know, high water rescue and other stuff.
So it's got a multipurpose and then. So we, if we if we got this vehicle, we would be the closest to Hitchcock that would have. An armored vehicle, so they could technically utilize us. To help their citizens as well or help their. Community as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And.
It's a hundred thousand dollars less than what y'all told me it was going to be.
That was back in twenty two or twenty one, so we accounted for inflation, just like everything else.
I just. Want to make sure, because I mean, difference between four hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty is.
Right, right. They're working on a fresh quote for us, but the one you have is twenty twenty one, I want to say.
No, no, it's very recent.
Yes, sir.
This one is?
Yes, sir. So it in the event that you have.
Oh, you got a new one. Oh, okay.
In the event that we have to go to a neighboring city, is there, there's agreements that we could have where they could reimburse us? Time. Et cetera, for for our officers being there, is that?
I would have to allow PD to answer that question. I don't know if it's covered in our mutual aid agreement or not.
We have MOUs with other agencies, but I don't believe it covers reimbursement. It's the same thing that they sent somebody over here, they wouldn't require reimbursement. It's just kind of like that mutual.
Scratch your back.
Right, correct.
Well, we got a multipurpose vehicle too. I think that's another selling point, high water rescue. And this this is a hundred thousand less than we've previously seen, as we said.
This is the first time I see this quote.
Wow. And and you got this, Mr. D? You got this quote or?
Not that one.
I got that one.
Hundred thousand dollars and and it. How come there's such a big difference in in cost?
So the one I got originally, that was probably from about four or five years ago. And we hadn't got an upgraded quote because we've been trying to see if we could get the the funding for it. And so we just kind of assumed with inflation and whatever, that was going to be about an approximate price for it. I called back up there the other day and he sent us out that new one and it was considerably less than we thought it would be.
But this is the amount that was given to us was three fifty and this is at three forty seven.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other vehicles like this in the county? Other agencies?
So there are some other agencies that have armored vehicles. The downside of theirs is there's other ones like Galveston, for instance, and I believe Lake City has one as well. They have one, it's called an MRAP. It's a military vehicle, but it's a mine resistant vehicle and it's very large and it's heavy. See, even Galveston, they don't bring them out to theirs because it's so heavy it can damage roads. So there's other agencies that have other ones, but we wouldn't necessarily have them them come out. Just to make sure we didn't damage roads.
And what do we, just so that we're clear, I'm sorry, chief. Texas City has this one.
They have a, they have a different, it's not like this, it's an older model, yes, sir. They have one as well.
So we're primarily using this for what again?
As far as a purpose for this, it would be for our SWAT team, for callouts, for hostage rescue, for. Barricaded subjects, stuff like that, because we have had really good success with these when we've called other agencies out to use them. Where it's deescalated the situation almost immediately. We had one, what was it, maybe four or five months ago? Over at apartment conflicts on First Street where we had the suspect was barricaded for a couple hours. And as soon as we brought out Texas City's armored vehicle, the guy gave up immediately. We've had another one where Galveston brought their MRAP out, another barricaded subject. As soon as the MRAP pulled up, the guy gave up immediately. So it's it's a good deterrent as well, like it kind of just shows more that you mean business as well.
Show of force.
Correct.
Yeah. I would love to see this in our department. I think that. Having that roll down the the street here in Lamarck, I think that would be a huge deterrent for, you know, gang members or drug dealers. I think it puts us in a whole new level of. Of. Not to be reckoned with. So I highly recommend this.
not to be reckoned with. So I, I highly recommend this.
Is that in the budget already?
No, man. This is not in the budget. This would be one of those additional items that we would possibly bring to council for review. For amendment, should the fees rise and you approve those things accordingly.
Fourteen months, fourteen months estimated completion at the earliest net thirty after completed and, and arrival. Right. We're not paying for it till next budget season anyways.
Correct. With, with the, so Linco is, is the number one in the game. They're, they're, they're the best ones that are out there.
They're manufacturing in Pittsfield.
Yes, sir. Yes, exactly. So it's, they're the best out there and, uh, that's, that's part of the promises they do. Since they're the number one in the game, they do this, this deal where they don't require any money upfront. All they require is a sign quote and a P O.
Yep.
And they'll start work on it. Now also the, the big benefit of using a, a big corporation or a big company like Linco is if you use one of these smaller companies or these fly by night ones, if there's an issue with it, or there's some sort of lawsuit that comes with it, they're not sending anybody out. Linco, I guarantee you, when I talked to the representative, he said, if there's an issue with it, where the lawsuit comes out, they will send their own attorneys out there for it.
This is the, this same company that we used was Swift Pack. And yeah, Marines and I got to go out there to the facility.
Yes, sir.
It was, yeah.
Yes, sir, they're.
Don't go out there in the middle of winter time, but if you can go in the summertime, it's beautiful country. I would.
Yes, sir.
What kind of warranty does it come with? Is, is there any, uh, anything specific for that?
That I'm not sure of. No, sir. I, I'm positive it comes to the warranty. I'm not sure what all, how, how long it is or how long it's, it's covered for.
It's, uh, it's got the six point seven turbo. Is that, do you know what, uh, who, the manufacturer of that motor? Okay. Can you find out?
Yes, sir.
What kind of warranty they have?
Yes, sir.
So we're not getting into something that's gonna, you know, maybe it breaks down three months after we get it and we incur, you know, fifty thousand dollar cost for whatever, if we could find something like that out to, um, I think it'd be, uh, i- if you could do that, that'd be great.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. So city manager, I would like you to fit this into next year's budget, because looking at this, it's going to be next year's budget before we pay for it.
When you say next year, you mean twenty-six or twenty-five? Okay, twenty-six. Got you. Certainly. The only thing to that is, is, and I have to work with Christine on this, in order to have it by twenty-six, we need to procure it now. So as long as, if that's a direction that's being given.
Payment doesn't have to be paid until.
Correct.
Until it's completed and the inspection is done. So we'll go up there and inspect it. And once we accept it, that's when payments due. So we wouldn't pay until it's completed.
Yeah, so we can.
Minimum fourteen months, five this year.
Yeah, we can, we can, that, so that's separate and apart from what we're talking about now, is what, is what the point that Mr. Ross is making. We, we have time to be able to do that. Uh, is it right? Which sense?
So the fourteen months would not start until we issue them a P O. We can't issue them a P O until we properly procure it. We won't even begin that procurement policy until you give us direction, go procure
Yeah.
said vehicle. And then we need to work with the vendor to make sure, are they sole source? Do we have to properly procure R F P, whatever we have to do?
They are sole source, so.
If they are sole source, then that makes it so much easier.
Yes, sir.
If that, if that's the direction that council wants to go in, you, you let us know whenever, whenever you're ready to make that.
Right. And I think, so we haven't given that direction yet. So I, I think we get past this budget, uh, uh, experience, immediately move into that discussion. If that discussion starts in September, October, fourteen months from then, right? So we're still on a, in a pretty good timeframe, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay, okay. I think that's, that's what you, you're trying to say.
I was trying to buy that. The box starts.
Starts when you, once you, yeah. Mr. Ross is saying, uh, let's line this thing out where it, it, it meets us in our new budget, which I, I get that. And, and, and so I think that's the, uh, the idea, because even if we say today we want it, it's still gonna meet us in our new budget.
October next year.
Yeah, regardless, it's still gonna meet us there.
We, we would have to execute the contract now though, correct?
We'd have to, we'd have to, within the next couple of months, we'd have to, uh, start the process of procuring it so that we can pay for it in next budget cycle. Miss, Miss Nance, did you wanna?
I just didn't want us to get off topic. We can add this as an agenda item for a future agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what I'm trying to, yeah. Yeah. I think that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to say, so.
Yes, sir.
So to drill down on what, what, what we're saying, Councilmember Lowery, whether we take that action today or we take that action in, let's say, September or October, after we get done with this part of it, still gonna basically be the same timeframe. Still gonna lead us into October of twenty twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
Right? So is, that's your point? So, um, we might as well take care of this part of it and ask Mr. Garcia to bring it back to us in whenever council sees fit. Do you want him to bring it back in September?
Absolutely.
September?
September?
Okay, September. Joe, Joe. Stop texting your girlfriend and pay attention. Miss Yansey, September? All right, well, so we're all good on that. We'll, we'll come back with this. Miss Nance, put that on the, we have one more meeting in, in August, correct?
No.
No?
Oh, wow. What's, what's today?
I'm sorry. Uh, put that on the
The ninth.
The, uh, ninth meeting for us to discuss and, and we'll, we'll provide direction then.
Sounds good.
Good plan, good plan, guys?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I do have those sole source forms that I can send over to you.
I think I saw it back when I have.
Yeah.
Warranty and, uh, manufacturer of motor.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
All right, council, it's four twenty-eight and we have to, uh, give Mr. Garcia some direction. I've given him my thirty-nine cent.
Okay, I'm ready. So looking at the thirty-nine cents and the forty-one rate, so you were able to, to do all of it. In comparison, the only difference, um, is the two percent cola rates across the, across the board went from two point five percent to two percent. And we look at the unit costs, it's not too far from each other, the one, uh, hundred and three, hundred and three thousand, five oh eight, ninety-four and eighty-two. So I would be willing to do the thirty-nine rate, but I really want to find that two fi- that two point five percent cola. I really want to see if we can find scrub a little bit more to find that money, the difference between one oh two, I mean, one oh three and eighty-two. And I know you say you're still looking. And that's not a whole lot, you, you know, there's not a whole lot of difference so that we can give our staff across the board that two point five. I think this is a very good job because you've basically got everything in there. You're just staggering it out a little bit.
And we found that money, Miss Yansey, with the, with the, if the council acts on this proposed, uh, uh, game room adjustment.
Right.
That's an extra three hundred sixty thousand dollars potentially. Uh, that's more than enough. Again, to put five, four new officers on the street, uh, and another detective, I believe, uh, as well as the things that, that, uh, you're asking about the, uh, uh, higher cola for our.
Our staff.
Right, non-contractual employees.
Mm-hmm. And this is the other thing, I think that's so important for our city is that we continue to look to, to do our infrastructure for the, for a bond package. My direction is to try to find a, a bond package. And I'm just one person and we have to talk about it more to do the public safety building and as well as, uh, a huge infrastructure bond to help us with our infrastructure. We, we have a horrible infrastructure. Our pressure, we've heard that over and over again. These constant water leaks, we as a community, and this is a district A, and you've heard us, uh, fight for Jefferson and Brown and try to get that, get that done. Um, but I applaud you for really giving us everything we needed uh, and, and scrubbing the numbers and, and doing the, and this exercise, it was necessary. So I'm good, Mayor, with thirty-nine cents, knowing that, as, knowing, making sure that our citizens understand that we cannot keep kicking this down the road. We have to deal with our infrastructure. As an alumni and a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy, it's refreshing to have someone advocate for our police. And to, to the point that they're pretty much getting a lot of what they didn't get before during the tax rollback. So I like to see that healing that's coming back to our community, to making sure that they have what they need and not a spoon when they need a shovel. So I would be fine with that, Mayor. Um, I do look forward to coming back to amend it, right? To amend the budget to get the two point five percent cola.
Yeah, I don't think we even need to do that, Miss Yansey. I think, I think we can get that in here. We don't even, we wouldn't even need to amend it. The way that, the way that the numbers look.
Okay.
Mr. Garcia, if you can, off the top of your head, Miss, Miss Yansey brings up a good point. Um, off the top of your head, infrastructure. People always want to know about our investment dollars in infrastructure. So in this upcoming year, whether it be ARPA or otherwise, uh, ARPA, C O, whatever, I'm gonna ask you four different areas. If you could, if you don't know, you know, get back to us by the close of this meeting. But how much, uh, from your recollection has this council or will this council invest in street maintenance this year? All of our funding.
I have to look that up.
Look that up. Okay. So when you look that up, also look up water supply. We're talking about grants. We're talking about, uh, utility funding, right? We're talking about C O's, all of those things. We need to know how much this council has earmarked for streets this year. Uh, how much this council has earmarked for the repair and the replacement of our water supply system? How much this council has earmarked, uh, for the sewer rehabilitation, again, grant funding and otherwise? Also, how much this council has, uh, has, uh, invested or will invest, uh, on our drainage infrastructure? Those are four big areas. Uh, again, as we support and empower our police and fire, uh, as we give Ms. Turner the tools she needs with the new staff person, budget, a budget coordinator, uh, for the first time in the history of Lamarck. As we do all of these things, people also want to know about the, the, uh, nuts and bolts. So before we close today at roughly six, if y'all could give us the rundown so that the people listening can know, you know, how balanced our, our efforts are on this, uh, in this budget process.
And Mayor Council, um, speaking on the budget coordinator, that will enable us to have budget year round. When this budget closes, we get ready to produce a budget book. Then we'll be ready to start looking at twenty-six and start meeting up with departments and start planning early.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, any other comments, council? Yes.
Yes, Mayor.
One more time. Is this, you said sewer rehab, street repairs, drainage?
And water supply. Streets, sewer, water and drainage. Those are the four. All, all of, uh, whether it be grant funding, Miss Turner, whether it be C O's, whether it be M and O, whether it be utilities, all those monies, right? One, one number for each particular, uh, uh, service so that people can know, oh yeah, we're spending two million on streets. We're spending forty million from, from, uh, from grants on our sewer rehab. Again, just to give them a quick reference. Mr. Lowery, did you have something?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Turner. I, I know you have been working hard and long. And, and the fact that you caught something from, from nineteen ninety-seven, I, I think that shows your capabilities. And, um, it's good that you caught that and, and that needs to be recognized. Uh, Mr. Garcia, I want to thank you as well. Um, never had you call me on a Saturday. I'm down before, so I know you've been stressed. Um, you're doing a great job. Keep pushing forward. Thank you for all you're doing. Both of you.
Very good. Council, any, any, uh, further questions for Mr. Garcia? When we entertain a motion, Miss Nance, should we? Should we direct the city manager to bring back a new schedule of fees?
So currently, um, the, I'm sorry, when you passed the last schedule of fees, you requested that they be reviewed every two years. Uh, we are at that two-year mark. It is currently, uh, being reviewed by staff. That process, we wanted to get through budget and then bring it back to you all after we finish the budget process. So that's already in progress based off of previous action.
Cool. Good deal. Good deal. What about the? We need to, we need to direct Mr. Garcia, before we leave today at some point, to bring back a franchise fee ordinance? For the waste management?
Yes.
I, I, actually, Mayor, you already have that as an agenda item coming for you on the ninth.
On that, good.
Yes, the, the waste management contract is being reviewed by our legal team, which will be brought to you on the ninth. At that point in time, if we want, if you all want to discuss franchise fees, we could, we could start that conversation then.
Okay.
Mayor, if, if I can, for the ninth, because we have so many activities that we need to do, we may want to ask, work with Kara, because you mentioned maybe have a separate meeting for just the purchases and R F Ps.
We could do that.
I guess there's, there's quite a bit. I know finance has some, fire will have some, P D will have some, and public works will too.
Okay. Let me ask you this, uh, there were a couple of positions in public works that we, uh, continue to struggle with filling and retaining employees because of the pay rate. Uh, and you were tasked with giving a salary adjustment. I would like to see those salary adjustments, like council to see them, as well as to see how competitive they ended up being for those positions in our county, if you will. Do you have that available?
I don't know if it's in, we made it into your packet. What we did is if you look at, um, your packages, there's a piece of document that shows the twenty twenty-three regional salary survey from H CAC. It looks like this. Should have been in yours. It should have been in behind tab two. The document that looks like this, it should be up for everybody to view at home. It is behind tab two. It's a twenty twenty-three regional salary survey. If not, Mayor, you can have. And only because I gave you my copy now, this is a, a salary assessment that we do every year with our partnership with H CAC. We've got them going back to twenty-one. It rates cities by population, by how many employees, whatever the case is. And as you flip through it, it tells you how we compare to other cities by position. If you flip through there, it'll get to the, one of the positions. And I, I brought this because these are all the positions being considered for the salary adjustments that you were facing today, including the ones in the utility fund that I have in my hand to hand out, whenever you'd like to see ours. Um, but essentially it gives you a breakdown by position that's being considered for salary adjustments before you. So all of those are in front of you today. As you flip through there, you'll be able to see what the comparison are. We are by far one of the lowest. We made great strides last year. We decided we're gonna try to do so in a three-year plan. This is phase two of that three-year plan to do so. And I've got those salary adjustments with me in my hand whenever you're ready to review those.
Oh, it's just one packet?
It's, it's two sheets.
Glad we're in school again. Take one and pass it down.
It's two sheets. Everybody should have two sheets. Option A and option B.
You give it that one. Do you need a copy? I think we got it. This is, this is.
This is your utility fund.
The, uh, salary adjustment is what this is.
All utility fund within it is your salary adjustments.
Very similar to the ones we just did for general fund. Same way, except we did them for utility fund.
Okay. So we're going, we're still taking views or what? Where are we at, Mr. Mayor? What, are we still going over the suggestions?
Right, we're still going over the suggestions and this is the, this is the part of, of his, uh, suggestions that, uh, that he has, uh, increased salaries to make them more, uh, competitive, uh, in the public works department.
So as a reference, what we've done, and I don't have them broken down position by position by position, but with the understanding that our utility fund employees were severely under, uh, under, uh, paid. What, what is in that attachment is your H CAC survey is backup that shows you by position where we rank for the position. So if you look at, uh, maintenance equipment operator, for example, you'll, you'll see that position listed on there. It tells you what they do and how we compare to other cities. I put the population in there so you can compare cities of similar size. That way you have that as backup documentation. Depending on which cola you went with dictated which option we were gonna go with, option A or option B. And we've made just similar adjustments as to where we were. So what you have different from the general fund that is driven by property taxes and sales tax, utility fund is only driven by any. and sales tax, utility fund is only driven by any utility fees that we bring in. These both show the same recurrence of where we expect to end next year and what the surplus would have been of the five hundred and sixty-one, seven eighty-five that's shown on your screen. So what's showing your screen now is option A with those numbers that are present. That includes your reorganization with your utilities director. It includes adding two people to stormwater so we can do some more stormwater work. Remember, we talked about building a, a full stormwater team. And it also talks about, uh, your equipment, uh, team that you wanted to build into, uh, Division twenty-two, which address some leaks. The purpose of this is we hope to realize less expenses put towards contractors for leak repair. You're buying equipment to go replace leaks and to go do work. We need the people to work with the equipment being placed. So these are your packages. This is your packages on one page essentially that were in the big packages everybody made behind your budgets in tab two.
So I asked you about salary adjustments and you, and this is, this is the utility fund. This is all the, what is, what is this?
This is, if you notice the line that says salary adjustments, package A, that is a combination of all of those. In your budget book and tab two, we broke it down by division. So. In division, uh, twenty-one, you building, building is, uh, ten thousand. Twenty-two, which is where your, so your operators are, we requested a thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollar, um, salary adjustment.
So, so Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir.
So then I see in blue, there, there are you, equipment operators, maintenance workers in blue with unit cost and applied cost. It, it's, this is, need, we need help understanding this. And why aren't these salary adjustments?
I didn't itemize them. I failed to itemize them.
That was the, that, that was the, uh, one of the things that we needed to see the most.
Certainly.
Is the itemization so that we can compare, right? If it's a heavy equipment operator in Lamar, you're proposing they have a salary of, let's say, sixty-five thousand dollars. We need to see what Hitchcock, what Dickinson, right? What, what, uh, cities around us and comparable cities. So that's why that was important.
Certainly. I can rework those numbers along with, I can rework the utility fund when we come back. We, you know, we have to bring budget back twice. So I can bring it back to the second one with that breakdown. What I'll do is if it's okay, I can use the HGCAC survey for reference to put that table together, extract that information along with the recommendations that match to bring that back.
Yeah, cause it's in this book, right?
It's in there. I just.
Yeah.
It's only so many hours in the day to get this all done, so. And I know we had to focus on.
But you said you wanted to get to the utilities. This is what you wanted to get to. Okay. All right. Mr. Ross, go ahead.
I'm. After weeks of this, I'd, we finally have gotten to a budget I think everybody can agree and understand with. I really hope we get to this two and a half percent cola for everybody. And I'm gonna agree with the mayor and Ms. Yancy that, and Councilman Laurie on the thirty-nine cent tax rate. If we can pay for everything and we got. To wait till next year for an APC, I mean, we're good to go, it looks like.
Very good. Anyone else?
Okay.
Good, good, uh, Mayor Proton.
You're gonna listen, um, I, I'm, here's a, here's something. To admit it, there's the, gonna be the bipolar Joe Campion, and there's gonna be the extremist Joe Campion. So two, I, I hate extremism and I ask people to go get the help if they're bipolar, as my nephew, so. Um, maybe I should take my own advice, uh, on that side. But, uh, having said that, I'm, um, I, with regard to our public service officers, uh, the fire and the police and where we are as a city, and I repeat what I was saying yesterday, it was yesterday, yes, yesterday, is, I, I believe that sitting up here, one of the things that I keep trying to do is, is push my boundaries. Try to look something and see how my experiences, uh, what I'm hearing can in some way come up with creative ways to progress and to better serve our community. The, the issue of support for our public servants, uh, police and fire, for me, is crucial. I've, I've constantly supported that, uh, period, uh, all my life, having involved. They used to go with the old, my previous job, go ride along with different police departments. The craziest one was with the Houston police officer who was so excited about making the stop that when he got out of the car, he forgot to put the cars in park and the car was moving as he's kind of, we're getting out. And, uh, so, um, that, uh, was most exciting. The, um, and I go back to this, is I understand the challenges and the, the concerns, but, but fundamentally, I wanna see all of this happen. I wanna see the staffing happen. I wanna see, uh, the fire department and, and, um, and we have that opportunity to do it now if we hold the rate. Let's say, hold the rate. Because the, I, I'm, I'm, this, this is the, the, um, bipolar side when it comes to finance. I'm very conservative with regard to finance. And, um, and I very, feel very uncomfortable about the, the changes that occur and these amendments, because there are too many variables there. That's the challenging part for me. There are too many variables. And I prefer to have security in knowing that we, we have X amount of dollars and to have the positive end up, if we assume the forty-one cent, we have the positive flow. We end up with at least the one twenty-seven. But in that process, let's go ahead and make the amendments, follow through with what's being suggested. And see at the end of the, uh, as we monitor with your new budget, um, analyst or personal coordinator, as you said, uh, what adjustments can be made. Now, the part about the creative ways, if we have the funding, we're not restricted in any way, shape or form to say, you know what? We've got the extra funding. We're not restricted to say, now, we can do a tax rebate to our residents. We've done that already before with our rollback. And yet we know we have the security that we're acquiring ultimately, even under this scenario, to start the planning for the ladder truck, which ultimately brings us in a different ballpark with regard to our fire insurance rates and commercial businesses. Okay, which is what, it's what we're lacking. You know, we look at that open area along forty-five. That's one of the challenges. Other cities have that, but the, you know, we're kind of restricted in terms of the height, uh, on this side. And then also it benefits us as homeowners with our rates as well too. So that's why I look at this forty-one cent right now as historical. Inflation is down. We've got some good pricing that we can acquire and fuel other areas. And so I, I, that's why I remain supportive of keeping that forty-one cent, but being innovative, monitoring it, do what we, what we have not done in the past. Continue to look at the, the accounting categories and, and what we've, with, what, what we should improve in this area, working with our outside, um, CPAs and accountants. And look at whatever, and correct whatever challenges we have. And in this process, in this process, we go ahead and say we're ahead. Ms. Turner, Mr. Garcia, our CPAs, you're ahead of the ballpark. And you're also now able to go ahead in your terms of your planning, go ahead and incorporate that one cent decrease for next year. Go ahead and start that five thousand dollar increase on the exempt, the, the appraised value of your, your home for purposes of taxes. I'm, I'm gonna even suggest something a bit more extreme. This is the extremist side. Is not only to have that, that increase in the cap, but I ultimately would like to see, because this is what I, what I think those of us, uh, as we get older, and they're supposed to be called our happy years, but we're not so happy when an asset that we acquired for maybe, uh, just really reasonable dollars is now being appraised at very unreasonable rates, very unreason. Just to seriously look at what other communities have done and to also look at implementing a senior tax freeze as well too. A senior tax freeze. And so it keeps some consistency in terms of our, our seniors and the disabled as well too, although we have some, some, um, freeze in place or some reduction there. I'm not, I've never been too clear about it, but we have something there as well. And, um, so that's, that's how I'm looking at it from a planning, from a financial planning perspective. Let's get the stability. We're at a good, we're at a good place. But don't believe for one moment that that's what we have to live with. We don't have to live with that. We can say, as we've demonstrated already, we're ahead of it and that additional sixty dollars that you talked about in the terms of your tax bill, we're gonna go ahead and rebate that now. We're gonna rebate it because we're ahead. Because I really think that on our utility fund side, we're only beginning to do what we've neglected so far in the past. And we have to effectively utilize that utility to deal with the challenges that we have on our infrastructure. And, uh, and we also have to do, as I've said it over and over, a better job of saying, we've corrected X amount of linear feet of sewer lines. We've built X amount of linear feet of sidewalks. We need to tell a story that's consistently out there, uh, with, with our public. And, um, and so I, I, I love everything that's discussed here, right? But I think that we can also accomplish the same thing, holding the rate, getting that stability as opposed to wondering if we're gonna meet all the projections and then three months from now, everybody's yelling at Mr. Garcia and Ms. Turner because, well, you know, you told us this and this and this and this. I don't want that to happen. Believe me, my stomach and the challenges that I have health-wise don't permit that to go on and on and on. Be positive. Let's be innovative. Uh, let's support our fire and police not only with words, but with the actions that we take. And, and then be also supportive of our taxpayers to say, we also committed, if we're ahead of the schedule, to rebate you the, the, the amount, that difference there. That's how I look at it. So.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Anyone else? Very good. Mr. Garcia, did you want to, uh, were there any other areas that you'd like to cover before we, uh?
Uh, no, Mayor, I just need more time to do the diligence of the breakdown of those, uh, utility fund salaries for the salary adjustments. Um, just need more time to do that accurately.
Also, uh, before you do, you, you speak, Ms. Turner, there was a question about a potential, uh, employee reassignment. Uh, let's be clear, the council has, uh, no purview in hiring or firing or suspending or discipling any employee other than the, how many do we have? Four or five? Kiara, Caesar.
Judge.
Ms. Judge Peter John and, and Mill Shirley, right? Is that four, right?
Technically prosecutor.
Four and five. So Gus is both of those. So, so we have four people that we, we supervise. The rest of those people are people that you supervise, but the council approves positions, right? The council has not, uh, approved, uh, a position for a, uh, utilities director, the charter, thank you, Mr. Austin, does outline the scope of such a position. Uh, but that position has to be promoted and named by a public works director. I said all of that to say, um, you have not brought that to us. And so we have not considered adding that. Is that something that you wanna share with us?
That was in your sheet.
That's, uh, that's the yellow, that's what you're doing in yellow?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What, for one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars?
That's including fringe and all the, that's TMRS, health insurance, all the fringe, workers comp, the whole nine yards. That's a.
How much does the public works position pay? The actual public works position? The director?
I wanna say.
I'm sorry, I said public, the public works director position. I'm sorry, Ms. Turner. And then I know you had something you wanted to add, so I, I'll circle back. Yes, yes. Add that and then we'll work on it.
Okay. So I just, and I wanna advocate for my department.
Okay.
My department's, um, financing utility billing. What we're gonna come up against in the next few months, once we get this RFP approved for our new software, I don't know if any of you have been involved in a conversion. That is a heavy lift. And it's gonna be a heavy lift for my department. So I just, I wanna advocate for them. They deserve their increase because what we're about to incur in the next six, seven months is gonna be astronomical. I just wanted to put that out.
Are you talking about cola, cola increase?
Yes.
Okay, got you. Thank you for that.
Ms. Turner, could you pull up the salary for public works director, please?
Is Ms., while she's doing it, and you may not know this and it's okay. Our finance staff members, have we did a salary survey on, for them as well?
We have not done a salary survey for any of the other staff, only that, those that are in there. I can provide that if you'd like.
That would be really important.
Absolutely. We can bring that all back for any, actually, what I can do is I can get to the entire twenty twenty-three book for reference because it's a really, really thick book. That's only a very small part of it.
Do a salary survey for finance. They are the persons responsible for keeping track of our money.
Right.
And you want to make sure those people have every opportunity to do that in an excellent way. Right? We don't want any person having any, uh, financial issues.
No, sir.
Working in finance, if at all possible.
I'll make sure I bring the entire.
If that makes sense, right?
It does.
You wanna pay them adequately.
I wanna pay, all of us. We wanna get paid adequately because.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Add, add the quick, add that word.
Good.
So. And I wanna keep my team intact because of what we're about to go through. You know, changing bodies and in the midst of something like that could be very taxing on a department, so.
Sure. Mayor, if, if you'll allow, I'll get that entire book printed for everybody and I'll bring it back for the next meeting. You don't need one?
I, I have it.
Okay. Okay. And it's, maybe by then we'll have the twenty-four book, because I know the twenty-four book's probably coming out any day now. But if it, if it's done in time, I'll bring it. If not, I'll give you this one.
I have a question. Sorry, just from my notes. Are we asking for a salad, for that to be a discussion at the next meeting? Or is that just information that he is going to provide to the council?
That's information he's going to provide for, for council, to council, for council to consider.
You're ready, yeah, yeah.
Well, public works director, the gross pay would be one sixteen, one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
For the director, one hundred and sixteen thousand?
Yeah.
And you have a, uh, Mr. Garcia, you have a utilities director superintendent uh, for a, a total package of one hundred and forty-six thousand?
Yes, sir. Let me go to my utility sheet. That's gross pay is not the.
Sorry, so, there's. So the gross pay For the utilities director is one oh four, six eighty-eight and seventy. Eight, seventy-nine cents plus fringe. The fringe is forty-one, four seventy-two twelve, but it would include a possible vehicle allowance if a vehicle is not available.
Yeah, we wanna, we we, I thought we said that we wanted to get away from everybody uh having a car allowance. Uh with the exception of our city manager, if he or she so chooses to have a car allowance, right? So nobody, I thought, maybe I'm wrong. So nobody else in our organization should have a car allowance.
Correct. That is right now, I no longer have one, so now you're down to three employees that have one.
Two on the EDC side.
Two on EDC.
The one that happened in the middle of all the changes, okay.
Yes, sir.
Can we take that from that person?
I mean.
And invert that to salary, because the idea is that. Right?
I don't know that we can't. I think we can. I, that's more of a, we have to ask.
We cannot have a hodgepodge. It doesn't make sense, because then Ms. Ms. Turner's gonna need a, I know you don't care.
As long as it's allowable, as long as it's allowable, yes.
And then Kiara's gonna need a car allowance, every department head.
Understood.
Kyle gets a car allowance. Who else is out there? James, you can't get a car.
It's it's funny you say that, Mayor, about car allowance. Kyle's gonna have a report here in a couple of months about vehicles, so. It's gonna be a hot subject.
Okay, so. I guess what, as we close this, a- as we start to move toward the barn, one of the air, the biggest department that we have not discussed. Yet is public works, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, how are you working this out, Mr. Garcia? You're having a public works director, and it seems like you're. You're you're recommending to council that somehow public works underneath this directors has two components. One parks and streets, basically, and one utilities, right? That means that you're creating or you're asking council to 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 fund, not create, because the charter has created it. You're asking council to fund this position of utilities director. Why? What benefits would this bring to our city and how will it increase revenue?
I can't say that it'll increase revenue per se. I would hope that it, by more efficient operations, it should hopefully, in the long run, reduce expenses. As we've seen it, hopefully continue to do less water leaks, hopefully less water usage and so on and so forth. Um so I can't say that it'll increase revenues, because on the utility side, that's not what we would necessarily do. Uh however, um where it would help us in the long run is I could tell you, right now, the span of control. Uh for that position as and and one in total, uh have, being in charge of capital improvements, streets. Um parks, utility twenty-four, utility twenty-two, the admin side, and then adding stormwater. Now also overseeing water meters in 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 that specific facet is a large growth. Turned a large growth as far as activities are doing. In addition to that, you're balancing over a hundred million dollar worth of projects for CIP. It's a very, very thin span of control, and we started noticing for efficiency purposes without getting into direct uh H R items. But for efficiency purposes, that needed to be split up. That's the recommendation that we're making. So in order to increase efficiencies and to drive these projects, uh we're not in a situation where we can have. Uh a robust in-house capital improvement team. We have to consolidate that into somebody's responsibilities. We don't have a robust engineering team. We outsource and do some of that work in-house. We don't have a robust team where we have grant administrators. We do that stuff in-house. We do know that that ship is pretty much sailed, uh and we understand that, so we all have to wear multiple hats to do that. So this role uh now of the utilities director, since most of our projects are utility driven. Uh right now, with all of our G L O projects for the probably next at least four years, you would think, minimum, is gonna be very, very heavy in that side. In addition to that, we've been very aggressive and very fortunate with some grants that have now allowed us to even more work. We've got the water lines hopefully getting started in District D. We're doing a hazard mitigation plan. Um you've got a lot of big changes going on with the city and it's just utility driven. If we're gonna make infrastructure a top priority, we need to give it the attention it needs, and the span of control is different. When we first wired working together, you made the the the, you you were very clear and given us direction, saying we want the safety to increase. We want the the calls to stop. We've given that support to P D, Fire, as far as public safety is concerned. The next major concern is been infrastructure. Right? So we we made some changes to that. We've had some code changes. We've added some body and streets and things that we're doing. We try to pay our people so we can reduce our turnover. Now, if we're gonna start really getting into these projects and driving these projects home. We've got to do that in the most efficient manner possible without adding robust teams. We have to wear multiple hats and increase our efficiency. And I I implore that if the charter allows it, and we can increase efficiencies by doing so, that you please consider doing that out of the utility fund with this position.
You uh. We were entertaining at one point some sort of projects manager. Is that what we called it? Projects coordinator?
Project coordinator is somebody that we've already hired. They're just about to start, but there's more to it than just.
Who's the, who who who, in the public works department?
Yes, sir. We posted it, we interviewed, we hired and.
So you say you hired somebody?
Yes, sir, I. Was yesterday, was yesterday your first day? I may have been.
I think we did approve that last.
You just approved it, you just approved it in the budget amendment. We went through the process, and don't quote me, I want to say yesterday may have been the person's first day. That don't, I'm not sure.
How much did that person make?
Could you look that up? Uh project coordinator.
And who that person report to in this scenario?
They would report to the uh the the utilities director right now.
So what?
I don't know the person's name, I'm so sorry. I don't know it by heart.
So you're proposing now to add, which this may sound like it's coming out, coming out, but it, I'm just trying to get information. You're you've added a projects manager. Is that what we're calling it? Projects manager?
Project coordinator.
Project coordinator.
Yes, sir. We requested a program manager. We said no to.
Coordinator is interfacing with G L O. They're interfacing with all of these grant uh uh organizations that have granted us funding. Uh they are working with the outsourcing uh portion of what we do, contractors, right? Every day, making sure that those folks are doing what they're supposed to be doing, all that, right? That's that person.
They're doing that as well as other administrative tasks involved with that. That is a very heavy lift.
Okay, and then that person is reporting to this proposed utilities director?
We'd propose that they would. We'd propose that they would report to the utilities director, yes.
So that's roughly two hundred something of a thousand dollars of earmarked monies going toward. It's coming out bad, worse than what I mean it, going towards supervision. And not toward uh boots on the ground. You feel like you need, you need more supervision in that department than boots on the ground? That that mattered me, I'm just trying to find information.
Not necessarily, and I'll say that because we spread the wealth a little bit with some of the other requests that that were made there as far as the fund is concerned. Um, I I I say that because. We're managing really, really high-value projects. Um some of the questions that have been asked about how we're doing certain things out there with the infrastructure. Um when we're spread really thin and we're trying to operate a brand-new wastewater treatment facility, it's a forty million dollar facility. Uh at least for the foreseeable future, we probably need to have a little extra oversight on all these projects. If we go out for a bond project of doing a bunch of street infrastructure, we're spreading ourselves thin with that type of stuff. We're gonna have to be very, very vigilant, and the amount of documentation and paperwork that we need to provide is massive. Especially if we're not gonna have somebody in the grant administration side in-house to do that, and we're continuing to try to not. Try to absorb as much of it in-house within our current, you know, things that we do, then we we find it prudent to do that.
The project coordinator has not been hired yet, um there with H R doing a background check.
Okay, I apologize, I thought they had started. I apologize, I thought.
No, that's fine, that's fine. That's fine.
When that makes me.
Uh September ninth?
What are we proposing to do? Do we need to add resources? We've heard throughout the entire year, uh given public works its due diligence. That um our organization is not being responsive to illegal dumping. Items in the roadway, items in the right-of-way, right? That's a big topic. Uh it's been said that many of our vehicles. Pass by opportunities to serve mattresses in the right-of-way, illegal dumping in the streets, things of that nature. They they, according to uh resi- residents, allegedly, they pass these items by. What what is, what's our plan? To ensure that our public works department is uh. Being responsive to what the community believes their roles and responsibilities.
Certainly, um I I neither one of the divisions is here, so I'll I'll ad lib as much as I can without. Hopefully stepping on any of their direct uh directive that they're gonna have. Essentially, you've addressed some of that today, or you would, what's proposed in front of you is 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 attempting to address some of that. So you've mentioned that uh we wanted to be more robust with our streets team. These two proposals that you have in front of you uh earlier with any one of the tax rates you would have picked was adding uh two bodies to that streets team. An operator to operate equipment, as well as a uh a a regular maintenance person to help with some of those um asks that that they were mentioning. In addition to that, uh you you added uh some more staff on the park side, which we know parks, traveling from park to park, they can also address those needs. Those two sides of those divisions will be more vigilant to do that. Besides redirecting and re-changing the culture of what we do, uh that's the best I can tell you right now. Um with, again, that span of control that we talked about, we feel very comfortable and confident where we're headed in that direction now. That that will continue to be less of a problem, as it's already begun to be less of a problem. Um we know there's more work to be done. Um we need to educate as much as possible. When it comes to the legal dumping, P D and Fire both. Have both made uh the the request to have some folks be more involved in environmental crimes. Um we were not able to fit that this year, but we are hopeful that we can bring that back in future years. So that's a two-pronged approach, how we do that. How we prevent the problem is we attack more. We we use code to educate in between, and then we use more streets folks to actually do the work.
So you clean those ditches.
You've added bodies.
Yes, sir, proposed, proposed.
Proposed uh on the street side. And what was the other side?
Uh we've got two in streets, one in parks. Three in utility twenty-two, which are your water lines.
Okay.
Uh two and twenty-seven.
These are new bodies.
These would be new bodies.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Okay, Mayor, I have a response for you, Caesar. Um. It looks like the person, the project coordinator, um she has already put in her notice, the hourly rate is twenty-two twelve. That equates to about forty-five thousand a year with fringe, maybe about fifty-three, fifty-four.
Okay.
But what did you say? I'm sorry. She already put in there what?
To be noticed, wherever she was coming from.
Oh, oh.
So that means she's already passed the background, she's already proceeded, she's already been received an offer, she has a qualifying offer, and thus she's now.
She's already ready to quit.
She already read.
She's been watching the budget workshop. Last thing I want to ask, uh um is a bu- is about. Uh wanted to get those numbers for uh our, for the four infrastructure uh tasks that we have before us. But I also wanted to go back to Fund ninety-nine. This is a very popular fund. Started out with one point two, you moved a hundred K out, you reallocated it in a different way, we still need to see those numbers. You moved out the one point one for the grant matches. When I looked at it last week, it was still not meshing. It was still, and I'm looking for that. That line item in this new budget book you gave me. So where is the, what tab would Fund ninety-nine be on?
I would ask, which, you're talking about general Fund ninety-nine or utility ninety-nine?
Utility Fund ninety-nine, because that's where the grant matches were written.
Yes, hold on, I'll tell you right now.
Small amount in in general fund two, but let me go ahead and tell, at least with the bond mark money. For um, can I just go down what we have in investments?
Hold on one second.
Okay.
It it's Tab twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, to answer your question. But I'm sorry, Mr. Osteen.
And I know we have that that worksheet where we have already. Dollars allocated, so water and sewer projects. But I just want to give you how much money we have in our bonds for each of the categories. So we have a tax revenue C O, a series twenty-sixteen. It has five hundred forty thousand in there, and it's for construction and improvements, both sewer and wastewater systems.
How much is that?
Five hundred forty thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
For sewer?
Uh huh, water, sewer, and wastewater system.
But these are just monies that are in funds, right?
Though that is money sitting in a vest that we can, that's bond money that we can pull and use for these projects.
So what I want him to do is to. Show us what the council has.
Allocated to eat.
Acted on and allocated, yes, ma'am. Not what's available, that that's important, but I want, I wanted to see what we've acted on so far.
But can I at least put it on the record?
Abs- absolutely, yeah, 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 absolutely.
Then we have a public property finance C O, is for the purchase and installation of wastewater system equipment. That's two million, six hundred eighty-one dollars. Two, wait a minute, two million, six hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. So two, six, eight, one, six, eight, oh.
Wastewater.
Purchase and installation of wastewater equip, system equipment. Then we have a tax and revenue C O, that's the twenty-twenty bond. Is for the rehab, construction and improvements to equipment, lift stations. Elevated storage tanks. Wastewater treatment plant and expansion. We have six million, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, thousand, excuse me, I I have to learn how to read my numbers. Six million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. So six, 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 three, five, three, six. And then we'll get that spreadsheet of of what, how how that is gonna be allocated out.
As was mentioned, Mayor, we gotta get that entire three-year fund to the penny.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, and that's that's good, good for her to put that uh for Ms. Turner to put that on the record. Uh what we want, uh not necessarily, it doesn't have to be today, but by the next meeting. We want, the council wants to be able to say to our community, in addition to the budget that we have. Uh we have presented uh to our 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 community, that we will potentially act upon. We have also earmarked. X amount of dollars for street repair maintenance, X amount of dollars for uh sewer rehabilitation, sewer system rehabilitation. X amount of dollars for water, uh freshwater uh distribution improvements, right? It all in one thrust to the community. It has to be one offering, right? The budget is X million of dollars, and it features these areas. Uh and we're also doing something about our infrastructure in these areas. Let's make it one big. You know, one big opportunity for them to see it all in one sitting, grab it, put it. You know, file it at home so that they can continue to go back to, right? One sheet, one document, one presentation, all of it.
So Tab thirty is a preliminary elementary attempt of doing that.
To do it, to do that.
To do that. If you look at Tab thirty, it's gonna include all your C O bonds. All of your currently approved, that you've come to council and adopted our allocation, not the ones that I shared with you today that I gotta bring back. And all of your grant sheets that are submitted and awarded and pending, they're all under that tab with a narrative in front of them. The full one-page narrative that shows a little story, what they include, what they don't include. Now, those have to be updated. With whatever I propose today, and it'll have to be updated once more to finish the three-page sheet, but that is an elementary attempt to hopefully encapsulate what you just said.
Okay, yeah.
So that's just for everybody to call and take home, yes.
So that the next time you do this, right? It it, now it's a story.
Yes.
Here's what we're doing in these areas, and I think people, when they get it all in one sitting, they can get it all, if you.
Yes, sir. And I, and Mayor, if I can, to your point from earlier, that might have to be a meeting of its own, like a workshop, maybe before a council meeting. That's that's just what we knock out. Hey, here's everything we've got going on.
If we have to do that, I think the people will understand. If it if it helps us to focus on that one item, or that one issue. And it helps them to focus with us, I don't think anybody have a problem with those types of special meetings.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
You said, Mr. Garcia, you said uh that Tab twenty-seven was the Fund ninety-nine. I'm looking at utility fund two, and it says. I'm looking at utility fund two and it says ninety fun expenditures. Is that the right tab?
It is, no, hold on. What's the best way to describe? Ninety and ninety-nine is fun ninety and fun ninety-nine. Can you guys? I'm sorry. Okay, can y'all help me articulate that? Because fun ninety as shown on that page, where it says fun ninety expenditures, and you flip the page where it says ninety-nine, I don't know why, but those are actually one and the same.
So show me where uh it was entitled disaster fund? Is that what what the title was last week, week, two weeks ago?
I have to, I have to defer.
See it here anymore.
I have to defer it to uh Christine.
Do you remember the line item we were talking about?
Wait, I think I know what you're talking about, man.
It wasn't fun twelve, it was it was fun ninety-nine.
I think you're talking about tab twenty-two. Is that the sheet you're talking about? Does that, does that look like the sheet you were talking about?
No, it was like this, I think. Yeah, it was like, it was like the one here. Who has the volume one of the budget book? We had volume seven now. Who has volume one? You got volume one back there?
Are you talking about like department ninety-nine where we said that we would allocate certain monies?
The grant monies.
The grant.
And the uh, remember it was one point two million dollars. The grant monies and the salary adjustments and y'all backed that out.
Man, did it look like this?
You got it? No, it it doesn't matter. Is this, so what's fun ninety-nine in the first?
So I'm looking at utility fund, department ninety-nine, where we allocated at first, I said we reserve one point two million. But then we went back and started analyzing.
And you pulled it out, right.
And pulled it out and we, we actually have a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for grant matches. That's for um.
Where is that on the, in 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 volume seven?
That should be under the utility fund. That's zero-two fund, utility fund. And it should say fun ninety-nine.
It says, it says.
Ninety-nine is fund expenditure.
It said ninety fun expenditure.
Ninety?
The same point it calls. Let's see how it says. So we call it ninety-nine, please see how the side says ninety-five.
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm good with that. I just, yeah, yeah, I I I got that. What did you say, uh? Tab twenty-one?
This is what she's talking about.
Yeah, here it is, here it is. Fun expenditures, one point. What do you got on yours?
I got uh twenty-three, one point eight.
One point eight, okay. So that's where we started with the one point two, right? So where would that, where would I find that in the newest, the latest, greatest version?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? And so it it looks like fun, it 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 started at one point eight and now is two point two? When we were supposed to be backing monies out?
So let me tell you what's happening in that um account. It is um, so for the grant matches, you know, I just told you it was a hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine fifty. I'm housing that under um count forty-ninety contingencies. And is for the, a stormwater project, I believe, SW management plan stormwater. And for the wisteria stormwater project.
I don't see any of that, what you're, what you're, you're talking about.
That's gonna be on your detailed sheet behind that.
That, the only thing I have is a utility fund sheet, a org chart and goals and accomplishments.
Yes, let me print your copy right now.
I I gave it to you.
I don't, where, so where is it, Ms. Yancy? What are you, what are you talking about?
So that was the sheet that was right after this one, right? In tab twenty-one, is that the one we're talking about?
I'm on tab twenty-two. But it it started out at one point eight, right? And then we said we found one point two million dollars that needed to be backed out, which meant that it should have been six hundred thousand dollars in this line item.
Okay.
And here we are again, the proposed in this line item is two point two million. It's, it actually went up four hundred thousand dollars. And if there's a reason for that.
Yeah, can I explain?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Trying to tie this up before we go home.
Okay, so as I mentioned, it backed down to one sixty-four, nine fifty for the grant matches. Then under account zero eight eight one, that's our operating transfer to the general fund. And what is occurring there, that's one point three million.
Go back, I'm sorry.
Okay. So if you look under account eight zero zero one.
Eight, what, what page?
It's it's on, it's in that fund. It's, if you just.
But I don't have the details to that, yeah. And Ms. Yancy is trying to give me that. What, now what, what's the four digits?
Eight zero zero one.
Okay, I see it now.
The account number.
It has zeros on it, though, the one I'm looking at.
Okay. Anyway, in that account, is the operating transfer to the general fund. And what occurs there is you, the, not only does the general fund pay, we share costs
Let me see.
For finance, HR, IT, city manager and clerk, the clerk's office. For, for salaries and things like that.
It's gonna be better next year, I'm telling you.
So you're talking about subobject code eight zero zero one? So she's starting right here.
Okay, all right, I'm I'm following along now. Tell me what you, what you were trying to tell me.
So we proposed under that zero eight eight one account, that's the operating transfer to the general fund.
Okay.
And what that is, is that the utility fund supports these positions, HR, the finance department, IT, city manager's office, city clerk. You know, we service the utility fund as well. So, and also five percent of water revenues. So from utilities, one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, the utility fund is gonna transfer over to the general fund, that amount of money for forty percent of finance, HR, IT, city manager and city clerk departments plus five percent of the water revenues.
Okay, where do we get those numbers from?
I calculated the finance department, salaries, HR, IT, city manager, city clerk.
Where'd you get the, where where did you decide to take uh forty percent of those departments? How did you arrive at that number?
Well, I increased it because it was, before it was, I think, I don't know, thirty percent. But I said, okay, I want to include colas and fringes. So I have to, I want to move that back because those areas do support utility.
At a level of forty percent?
Yes, sir.
So that's one point three of it, right?
Yes.
Okay. But it says two point two. Thank you for that.
Section that goes in.
Okay.
So that's a portion of it. Then we have utilities expenses, communications, um equipment replacement. We have the fleet program that makes up three hundred and sixty-two thousand.
The fleet program buying the vehicles, leasing, leasing the vehicles.
Leasing the vehicles.
You said you fleet? You said they, they they transfer into, from the utility fund?
Yes.
What was the other thing you said?
The subcategory is called utilities. And that's three hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-one.
What's that for?
Communication, equipment replacement, the fleet program.
The fleet was three hundred thousand?
No, the fleet was two hundred. That's a total for utilities, sub, utility section. Within the utility section has communication.
How much is that?
Fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty.
And what else does it have?
Equipment replacement.
How much is that?
A hundred and forty-seven thousand, one twenty-five.
Okay.
Fleet program, two hundred thousand.
Would equip, equipment replacement be the meters? New meters? Uh, it would be new meters, right?
I'm almost positive it is. I I don't know if I have a note in my budget book.
All right, I I think, so that, all that comes up to two point two.
It's, I'm still going. I'm still going.
Okay.
Okay, then we have a section called services. Services includes the general insurance, that's to ensure our properties, our generators and uh buildings. It has a utilities portion that we allocate to utilities. We have a general fund portion and then we have a utility portion to pay for our insurance. Um, there's legal services. Um, I I allocate audit services to the utility fund as well.
Okay.
Okay. And also within that services is is the grant matches. So that all totals five oh five, six forty-nine.
So one point three plus five oh five is one point eight. This is two point two, yes?
Okay.
Two point, two million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Okay, then there's repair and maintenance, that's a little section. We budget one thousand dollars for that. And what that is, is um they said the vendor is Crescent Electric, so I guess little things like.
Small, small repairs.
And then then of course we have our personnel.
You have.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Hold on, hold on. Let me, let me read here. That's it. That's all.
And all of that comes up to two point two million dollars?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's, that's fine. He's gonna wait till Joe gets off the phone here. It's all right, man. Hey, we don't need to make a phone call every now and again. All right, Ms. Ms. Turner, I have baked and filleted your brain uh and sauteed and did all sorts of things to try to make sure that we've turned this thing upside down in this five thirty-five council. We're bringing it into a barn finally. Any other questions, comments, requests, last minute concerns before we start acting? Been a rough budget workshop cycle. Uh, it has been, we've broken records, this has been the longest. This is number eight or seven or eight or somewhere in there. Seven.
We have one longer.
Not as many days.
We did seven last year.
We did seven last year.
Seven.
How many, what, so what's this one?
Seven or nine.
It's seven? We are at the end of it, council. Thank you. Uh, there used to be a time where we used to do, James, didn't we do like maybe two budget workshops? Like two days and we were done. Three at the most, and that, we were really mad that if we got to three, it was up, we were upset. Times have changed, people, people.
Is that a challenge, Mayor?
Uh, no, that's not a challenge. Time, times have changed. People are more interested in them, in their tax dollars. People are more interested in their tax dollars. People uh want to trust their government more. Uh, and so because of that, people have taken a greater interest in these types of events. Thank you, uh, both of you. Uh, we were, council was very uh critical as a whole. Uh, we wanted it right. Uh, we are on the ru- way to being better, right? Uh, it's a learning, learning experience for all of us, this new council, new finance director. Three-year, two and a half year, city manager and staff, we get it, we get it. We're not, we're not where we wanna be uh with our relationship with the community as it relates to trust, uh especially as it relates to fiscal responsibility. Um, but we are moving in that direction. Thank you all for your efforts. I am uh satisfied with the uh with with what this council has said so far uh in our budget. We've said that fiscal responsibility is extremely important. We've said that accountability is extremely important. Uh, we've said that the, our ability to provide adequate public safety in the form of police and fire is extremely important. We've said the continued renewal of our infrastructure is extremely important. Uh, we've said a future public safety building is extremely important uh because we have kept uh uh our cost down and our tax rate down as low as we possibly can with the condition and the situation we find ourselves in. So there's a lot that has been said and that will be said through this budget. Again, Mr. Garcia, I am your fiercest critic, but that's because I wanna make you better. Ms. Turner, I am impressed with your ability to be resilient, to bounce back, your passion for uh coming back better. Police, fire, thank you for your diligence, for keeping us company throughout this process, for answering our questions. And certainly, we cannot go without thanking Ms. Nance uh for her uh quiet consistency in helping us. Gus, if you're around, certainly, uh our prayers are with Gus's family. We won't mention any more than that because I don't know if 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 Gus has mentioned any more than that, but we're praying for Gus, his lovely family. Uh, we wanna thank always, always, always uh our assistant city council members, Mr. James Osteen and Sally Austin and the Penningtons, who certainly have supported not only this council, but councils previous to this council with advice, with uh concern, withholding us accountable. All of these things work together to make Lamarc better. So as we close this budget workshop, council, we're gonna move uh to final thoughts. Uh, and then Ms. Nancy's gonna direct us on action items.
Okay, you wanna do your final thoughts and then?
Yeah, no, yeah, let's do, let's, let's do item two and then do our final thoughts. Thank you for that. So council, we have before us, lost my agenda now. Item four-two, uh property tax rate, amending a property tax rate per one hundred of taxable value for tax year twenty twenty-three and calling a public here. Is it tax year twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four? It says twenty twenty-three. Okay, let me redo that. Four-two, property tax rate. Amending a property tax rate per one hundred of taxable value for tax year twenty twenty-four and called a public hearing on September ninth, twenty twenty-four. Sounds like Mr. Ross, Ms. Yancy, and at least Mr. Lowry uh have suggested that there is a forthcoming motion for a tax rate of help me guys, three point three nine.
It's a point three nine eight five zero one.
I will entertain a motion to set a tax rate for the city of Lamarc budget year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five of point three nine.
Eight, sorry, eight five zero one.
Three nine eight five zero one, point three nine eight five zero one. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I do in this time, um, just because it talks about in the.
In this time, um, just because it talks about in the caption doing a public hearing. Um, we all know that there was a public hearing last night. The city always does two public hearings for budget and tax. Um, in order to do that though. The second public, we have to pass our budget and our tax rate by ordinance. And we have not done a first reading of the ordinance. For either, I didn't feel comfortable with putting it on last night's agenda because I know you had the meeting today. Um, I would like to request a special meeting sometime next week so we could do the first readings. That way we're still able to meet our obligations with the um Gauzen County Tax Assessor to have that public hearing on the ninth.
Very good. We can do that, we can do that. Uh, those meetings only take five minutes, so it's, it's, so we can do that next. Uh, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, evening, six o'clock.
Well. For clarity. Did I hear, what you're saying is that? We, we're gonna have a special meeting to actually accept the budget and set a tax rate. As a first, as.
As the first reading of the ordinance, yes, sir.
As the first reading of it.
Reading of it because we've already committed to doing the public hearings on the ninth. Um, and those actually should be in the newspaper tomorrow, I believe, is when they're scheduled to go out. So. In order to maintain our schedule with them, as well as once that goes out, we have to be completely done within seven days. To keep the timing in order, we would need to do the first readings next week. Does that make sense?
Well, uh, uh, all, all I'm trying to uh understand, I don't know if Gus is on the line, but.
He's not here with us today.
But the. We. We, we passed an initial one, right?
We proposed.
That was initial proposal?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, that's my, that's where I'm.
Yes, sir, we initially did a proposal. And now you guys are amending your proposal, which you guys were more than able to, willing, sorry, more than capable of doing. But now we have to do the official ordinances to set those.
Okay, now I understand, now I understand.
Any further discussion? In that motion, it's in, it, do we need to spell out that we are also gonna have a public hearing? September ninth? I, I just entertain a motion for, uh, for the thirty-nine cent tax rate. Should I also add to make sure that this motion is covering the public hearing on September ninth?
We, we can. It's in the caption, but to be clear.
Am I good?
Yeah.
I just said it. Is that good enough?
That's good.
Any further discussion? Hearing and we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Very good. We are now, uh, we don't have any items for executive session. Action's taken. Counsel, you can do it seven days of uh budget workshop and certainly you may have some, uh, some comments for. Uh, our wonderful community members, your constituents. Uh, and so if there are any council members at this time that'd like to certainly share their thoughts about this budget workshop, uh, the work involved, you may do so at this time. Anyone? Mister Lowry?
We, it's a learning experience. It is a learning experience. Um, I'm learning a lot. I'm learning fast. This was my first three budgets in one. And uh, definitely like, uh, trying to be more like Mister Osteen and Mister Pennington.
Yeah, y'all did. Ah, I see what y'all did there. I see that. That it, Mister Lowry?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I wanna thank you, Ms. Turner, you city manager. For getting this nailed down. Once we started coming through the problems, getting it figured out, making it easier for. My foggy old brain to work on some. Thank you to police and fire for giving us the wish list. That way we could actually. See what was asked for and make decisions on how to get there. Um. That, that helped tremendously. And thank you to everybody that helped just make, make us through this. We appreciate it. All the comments, critiques that we've gotten over the last. Three weeks. All I got.
Thank you, Mister Ross. Ms. Yancy? Nothing?
Nothing, thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protem?
Well, it has been as, as usual. A wonderful, uh, always a wonderful learning experience as we understand uh finance. And for me, I hope I can continue to grow. Got a last step to finish up. Forensic auditing, I'll share the lead. I, I, I won't say this, I'm going to be watching this, right? I'm gonna remind folks if we're not meeting our goals, guys. Alright, and, and, because I've that. Uh, that I will promise. On that side. Uh, but I also will be also following up on the, the suggestions. Uh, to lower the, uh, to increase the appraised uh exemption on our properties. Get that up ultimately to forty thousand dollars. And um, and, and other, other ideas that innovated ideas that other cities are doing. That's all.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. Uh, we are, we're certainly gonna give our finance director and our city manager a chance to uh. Uh, make final comments before we close today.
Um, well, no, you go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Go, go ahead.
It's been tiring. I'm learning a lot. When you come from a budget team, you know, you see certain sections. But when you work for a small city like this as a finance director, you see everything. So. Um. Of course, I have, I had a learning curve and still do have a learning curve. But I have learned so much. And from that first week, it was rough. But I'm telling you, it. I'm thankful for that because it's gonna make me stronger, make a stronger finance director and I, and, and. I don't know. It's, it's, it's just awesome. It's awesome. And I thank y'all for the learning opportunity. So, but next year, we're, we're gonna get better. We know the mistakes, we know the pitfalls. Now we can start planning ahead and moving forward.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Mister Garcia.
I wanna thank the entire team, uh, staff. I wanna thank. I wanna thank my family. So I wanna take a moment and thank them. Because they've been my rock through this entire thing. And also my entire family here. They've been very supportive the entire process, all hundred and eighty-eight of them. I wanna thank all of you all for your patience and your guidance. And for the residents out there that really keep supporting us and keep, encouraging us to just do the right thing. Y'all's belief in us really does make a difference, and I appreciate that. Never ran from anything. Took it on the chin. That's just who I am. That's who I grew up being. That's not gonna change. But I couldn't do it with this entire, without this entire team that we have that feels the same way and carries that same torch. So thanks to them, thanks to their entire team. Um, can't single any of them out because they, every, everybody's been accommodating from, hey, grab the copies. Hey, we need whole bunches. Hey, we need dividers. Hey, run and get this. Go run and get snacks. It's just been, everything that it takes around the city is. Really eye-opening. A lot of the folks at home don't get it. We all play a role. You know, um, when a police officer or a resident reports that a light is out. That charge is a chain reaction that we have to get now staff to contact Mexico and follow up with them and get it done. And it's just, it, there's, there's a process to everything that we do. And it's really, really nice to see the progress we've made. In a short amount of time, and I hope we keep uh. Keep leading the way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, just real quick. Uh, two things. It, the, it, the United Way Mainland has a luncheon, the kickoff luncheon at the Doyle Convention Center on Thursday. Um, if anybody here in the council is interested in attending the Red Cross as a table, please let me know. It's at, um, begins about eleven-thirty. Uh, I um will not be there. I will be attending the um. Uh, Houston Gavisner Council's uh collaboration with the Office of the Governors. On tourism on Thursday, um, at the Federal Reserve Bank in Houston. And that's an all-day event there on that side. To how to all, how do, how can we bring more businesses to LaMarque and give them money? That's the important part, and give them money. So we might have some ideas for you, um, council member, Ross.
I will entertain a motion. Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor? Stand adjourned.